Mr. City Clerk, are we ready to roll?
We're ready.
A couple of meetings are ordered. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Duran?
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Halter?
Here.
Councilmember Campos?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dr. Sanchez-Glosios?
You're here.
Mayor Schrader?
Here.
Seven members present, do your form.
Thanks.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. If you'll allow me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is dear and my nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
That was really good, Councilmember Johnson, but you know, the girls, the eight-and-under all-star team might have to beat on that one, so, um, last week. Special presentations and announcements. The Ark of Ventura County's 70th Anniversary. Founded in August 1954 in Santa Paula, the Ark began as a vision for a more inclusive society where individuals with intellectual development disabilities, known as ADD, could live full lives and participate in their communities. Over the past 70 years, they've grown into a wider organization, serving thousands of individuals and their families across Ventura County. The Ark is dedicated to empowering people with ADD to achieve their goals. Today, they provide services to over 650 individuals and employ 220 Ventura County residents. They work compassionately to ensure that everyone served can live with dignity, independence, and the opportunity to contribute to society. Our commission centers on recognizing the unique strengths and abilities of each person they've served. They are committed to fostering respect, independence, and self-decrimination, while also addressing the barriers that individuals with ADD face. We honor their empathy and service, thanks for the more inclusive and equal community within our city and county. As we mark this milestone, we are assured that the Ark will continue to innovate and expand its services to meet the evolving needs of our community, ensuring that every person with ADD has the opportunity to thrive. I, Joe Schrader, Mayor of Ventura, and on behalf of the entire City Council, want to heartily thank everyone who has contributed to this journey: staff, volunteers, board members, partners, families, and especially the individuals served. Here's to 70 years of empowerment and inclusion, and to many more years of positive impact. Thank you. Here to accept the proclamation, we have Esther Anaya and Alicia Gomez.
Thank you so much.
And thanks so much for what you do. It's fabulous. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. I am Esther Anaya, Director, Executive Director of the Ark of Ventura County. On behalf of the Ark of Ventura County, thank you for this proclamation honoring our 70th anniversary of empowering individuals with ADD. I was joined today by Steve Romero, Carly Brockman, Gary Schwartz, and Alicia Gomez. Seventy years ago, parents challenged the system. They challenged the system to be inclusive of all people. It is because of these parents that Steve and Carly stood before you today as contributing members and residents of Ventura. Both Carly and Steve live independently in the city of Ventura, and it is because of the support of our dedicated, direct support professionals, also to present today Alicia Gomez and Gary Schwartz, that individuals living with ADD are able to be contributing members of their cities and of society. On behalf of the Ark of Ventura County, we proudly accept this proclamation.
It is an honor, I didn't realize this, my birthday was in, is in August in 1954, so it's an honor to share my birthday with the founding of our, there would be no better birthday present for me. Thank you. Closed session report. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The City Council met in closed session tonight for the items listed on the agenda, and there's no reportable action. Thank you.
City Council Communication. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we have my slide, please? I apologize, councilmember, we didn't receive it.
Oh, no. Seriously?
Other City Council Communications? I'll fill in some space. I went to the cornhole tournament, and I think I saw a couple other City Council members there, and talk about the elevated spirit of the city of Ventura. The owner of Spencer McKenzie starts the tournament with 24 people, I think 14 years ago, and when I walked into the county fairgrounds, there were 1,088 two-person teams from all across the United States and even people from Europe. I, um, I just couldn't believe it. It was an amazing group of people, they had a flyby, and they were proudly wearing their team shirts, and they were there to win, they were also there to have a good time, and it was a bunch of, just, I guess, just kind of great Americans inventing a sport and having the most fun possible. So my hat goes off to anyone and everyone who was involved with that cornhole tournament. It's the largest cornhole tournament in the world. Oh, yeah. Councilmember Johnson, can you, can you beat that one?
Instead, I'm just going to talk about events that are going to happen, if that's all right. And I am going to see what I can do to print out some copies of this to have, and I'll put out there, because there's a lot of events that I have coming up. And so, all right, let's start with this Wednesday. At 7:00 PM, the Coligery Community Council will be having its monthly meeting. Sabrina Rodriguez and people, and Dr. Castro from the School Board and the School District are going to be there to talk in part about ballot measures. I'll be there to talk about things. This is a Zoom meeting, and the agenda and the Zoom link are available at cacventura.com. I want to take a moment before I go on, and while I still have a soapbox, I want to thank staff for all their work with the, with the community councils, for showing up, for really being, letting the community councils be that conduit, but in particular, Mayor, I want to thank the Police Department for really having somebody there at every meeting of every community council meeting, every month. When I first got involved in local issues, that was not the case. And in fact, that is why I got involved in local issues, was because there was a very big disconnect between the Police Department and the residents. And so now, you know, we're at a point where I think we all take for granted that when you go to a community council meeting, that the police are going to be there, and they're going to talk about the trends in your neighborhood, and they're going to be there to answer the questions. I want everybody to understand that I do not take that for granted. It was an intentional choice, and it's not a simple thing for the department to be sending people to meetings all the time and the evening. And so I am grateful to everyone who has been involved. Okay, so that's Wednesday, that's tomorrow. Next Thursday, it's August 29, at 3:00 PM. Oh, no, that's not next Thursday, that's two days from now. Thursday, August 29, Thursday, 3:00 PM, it will be at Keith's Coffee at 1171 South Victoria, if you're on my mailing list, you saw that, we scheduled, we had to reschedule. So it will be this Thursday, 3:00 PM, Keith's Coffee. Thursday, September 5, 9:00 AM, breakfast at Hill Street Cafe, that's over there by the Government Center, the road. And then Saturday, September 7, 7:00 PM, at the little restaurant there, I forget what they call it, Green Olive or something, inside Santa Cruz Market in 1947 East Main. Because I have so many obligations on weekends now, there will not be a second Saturday cleanup in September. And I'll see what I can do to print out some copies of this, because I know it's hard for people to take it all down. You can always find me on Facebook or Instagram, @mccreynolds, down there. Or you can always text me at 805-515-1639. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Campos?
Hello? First, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to remind the community that the Westside Community Council meets, not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday at Bell Arts, and we have a great meeting coming up this September, so I encourage everybody to attend and find out what a great community council does. The other thing I'll mention tonight, I received a lot of email and social media posts this weekend, making negative statements about some city staff members. And it was upsetting to me because I know those comments to be not true. And so, some of the people who emailed, that may be here in the room tonight, I know who's an item you all want to speak on, but I would ask you to be kind to the staff. None of them is going out on their own and making plans. They're hardworking, and they work at the direction of the council. So please remember that when you're speaking tonight. Thank you.
Other communications to other City Council members. If not, we'll go to City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start with my comments, I wanted to acknowledge an oversight regarding the posting of the Spanish version of tonight's agenda. Fortunately, it was not made available last week alongside the English agenda. Once the issue was corrected and the agenda was posted on Monday, our staff promptly contacted Spanish-language stakeholders in the community to ensure they were fully informed and had access to tonight's City Council business details. We recognize the importance of ensuring that everyone in our community has access to crucial information and sincerely apologize for the inconveniences it has caused. Want to remind the public that the State of the City address will be delivered by Mayor Joe Schrader on Thursday, September 19. This is an annual event hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. This year, it will be at the Crown Plaza from 7:30 to 9:30 AM. The presentation is a ticketed event, and will provide an overview of the city's budget, department updates, and accomplishments, goals for the future, and much more. The public is invited to livestream the presentation on the city's YouTube channel or attend an abbreviated version at the City Council meeting scheduled for October 8. You can visit the city's website to view past presentations, or check out this year's presentation, which will be available in late September. The city is proud to share the launch of Ventura Connects, our new online portal that makes it easier for residents to report issues like potholes, graffiti debris, and much more. You can submit requests from your smartphone, tablet, or computer anytime and from anywhere. With real-time updates, photo and video uploads, multi-language capabilities, and GPS-tagged locations, Ventura Connects ensures service requests are handled quickly and accurately. The public can also track the progress of requests with just a few taps and then submit them anonymously if so desired. The application is available and download in the Apple Store or the Google Play Store. And to learn more about Ventura Connects, please visit the city's website. The next meeting of the City Council will be on Tuesday, September 10. The September 24 meeting is tentatively canceled, and the next meeting following will be on October 8. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Moving on to consent items, there are a lot of consent items on the agenda tonight to consider. Other questions, comments, or requests? Do you have an item to pull? Mr. McReynolds?
I'd like to request item 3 to pull.
Item 3 to pull. Mr. Halter?
Hi, Mr. McReynolds already did it, so thank you.
Any others? So we will pull 3, and I'm open. Excuse me, I need to go to public comments. I almost forgot. On consent items.
On consent items, besides item 3?
Yes.
We have one public comment, Glenn Overly, who's been seated time by two different individuals, so you'll have nine minutes.
On which item, please? Which item?
Item 4. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry that I missed your birthday. I wish I would know.
You haven't missed my birthday, it's actually the 29th, so...
Maybe we can do golf.
I will be looking for your birthday card in the mail.
You shall have it.
For both you and Patty, I hope.
Absolutely. Goes without saying. Miles, I'm glad you're feeling better. Tonight, I want to, my name is Glenn Overly, by the way, and tonight I want to oppose consent item number 4. And the reason why I want to do this, I'll explain. So how did we get here? As I recall, Councilmember Johnson made comments about the purchase of medical benefits from the city. Basically, his monthly stipend of $600 did not cover the cost of medical, so ultimately, it was costing him money to be a council member and pay for medical coverage from the city. Somehow, that morphed into this policy consideration. On July 16, staff presented council with a chart that listed 18 separate cities. The chart will be up here in just a minute. The chart looks pretty much straightforward, but there's a twist. Of the 18 cities listed, 61% of those cities are charter cities just like us. The other 39% are general law cities. This seems like apples-to-oranges comparison, and perhaps a little misleading. I hope council was aware of that. As another observation of this chart, it is interesting that for the most part, with the exception of Oxnard and Costa Mesa, the highest general fund budget cities are charter cities just like us. The only charter city listed with a lower general fund budget than Ventura is Redondo Beach. By the way, that's where I grew up. The charter city most comparable to Ventura was a general fund budget and a number of employees similar to Ventura, San Mateo. San Mateo is located in San, on the San Francisco Peninsula, and the cost of living in this charter city is 169% of the national average. I'm not certain of the condition of its infrastructure, but I suspect it's better than the condition of Ventura. It is also important to understand that the median household income of San Mateo is slightly above $149,000, while Ventura is slightly above $96,000. That person's not with me. This is significant, and it also note that according to the chart, San Mateo still pays its council members $600 a month. What is the cost of policy change before council? According to city documents, the price of this policy at the high end will be over $91,000 per year if all seven council members select the highest projected family policy. This is not about this council, it is about the impact on future councils. These numbers are not going to break the bank, but there are some considerations. First, council members are elected officials, not full-time employees. Number two, the health benefits you are requesting for yourselves are part of a benefit package for full-time supervisor-level employees that were negotiated in good faith by a union for full-time staff members with a rank of supervisor above. Number three, full-time line employees do not receive these dollar amounts towards their insurance, they must pay out of pocket for themselves and the family. Number four, the union did not negotiate these health benefits with any understanding that the council would be included in any of these groups. Number five, council members enriching themselves without voter approval goes against the common interest of the citizens who elected them, and it's not the spirit of our charter. Can council appreciate the message that you are sending to the line staff members of the city who must pay full vote for their health insurance on income levels that are considered low for the industry? I have spoken to several line employees that described the city insurance benefits as inferior to other cities, including the county programs. How does council believe line employees would feel about council approving their own health benefits? Do you... Still not my friend.
I apologize for having these issues, I'll try to figure it out.
No worries. Do you believe the union is going to appreciate these plans being used by council to line their pockets, even though elected officials are not full-time employees? Do you believe the approval of this policy will impact employees' morale? Do you think this might set a precedent for part-time employees' compensation in the future? In case you haven't figured it out, I am opposed to council enriching itself without a vote in the public. I believe strongly in democracy, and this flies in the face of those basic concepts. But even more egregious is the concept that providing medical benefits does not serve all council members equally. I understand the mayor receiving more compensation than the other council members because of the charter language and the fact that the mayor clearly has more responsibilities than the rest of council. I do not support council, and this policy is written, because it will compensate council members at different rates. I do not think this was the intention of the city's charter. The only member, according to the charter, that should be compensated at a higher level is our mayor. This policy does not follow the spirit or the letter of our charter. How is this even possible? Since it costs the city money to provide medical coverage per this policy, it has a value attached to it. During the July 16 meeting, we learned that several council members will not utilize the benefits of this policy. So council members that do not elect to receive these benefits will receive financial compensation greater than our colleagues. Council members that have family members and take those benefits will be enriched more than a single member who elects to receive those same benefits. In closing, this policy was not thoroughly vetted, and council did not carefully consider the inequities before making a decision that is counterintuitive to equal council compensation values. The easy solution to this policy was to increase the monthly stipend for council before the voters. That increase, if approved by the voters, would allow council members to continue to purchase their own medical through the city as currently allowed, independent of other council members. Compensation would be equal and in harmony with the charter. And so just as an example, and I've covered this before with council, but it's important for the audience, Bill McReynolds may not accept the health benefits. He has an option, but he may not take them. But if Councilmember Duran does take those, the fact that the city's paying those fees gives Councilman Duran more compensation than you get for serving on the same job, and that just is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes public comments on un-pulled consent items.
I'll entertain a motion on consent items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11.
I'll move to it.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Vote, please.
We have a motion, a second. You cannot vote. Waiting on one vote, although it's in Ventura. Seven eyes. Six eyes, and a motion carries.
On to consent item number 3, the Hope and Solution Subcommittee Work Plan. Councilmember McReynolds, I believe.
Yeah, so I have several questions for staff on the work plan.
Good evening. Thanks, Councilmember, for your guidance, Community Development Director, we're available for your questions.
Okay. Good, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my first question is, I admire forward the policy consideration regarding this on it, and, you know, thank you for your work in getting this over within the timeframe. I still have a variety of questions concerning the work plan. My first question, again, I just want to reiterate the point that I don't think the name makes any sense. I can look at any, the agenda center, and see, basically, I know what the planning commission does, design a new committee, historic resources committee, I don't know what Hope and Solutions does, and I just think we're doing a disservice to the residents that want to be an active part of this, and I really think we should consider removing it. I don't know if the staff has any comments on that? Or any?
We do. I absolutely agree with that sentiment, that it is confusing, and I think specifically because all of our other committees, subcommittees, boards, and commissions are very clearly identified through their names. And so we would recommend that this be the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee of the City Council, to keep it really simple. I think having the words "housing" and "homelessness" in the title are exactly what it is, and would let themselves to help people to understand. And, I mean, we're happy to operate under any name, but I totally understand that this would help to clearly identify the subcommittee for the community.
Okay, and then my next question is regarding if the, what I'll continue to call the Hope and Solutions Committee, we have, we get an application from the federal government to block grants, council funds, and then does that come before the Hope and Solutions Committee, or it comes before the full council for a recommendation?
Yes. So the Hope and Solutions Subcommittee would actually make the recommendations, review all the applications, interview the applicants, make a recommendation to City Council for final approval. Previously, staff was doing that portion of the review, and then coming straight to City Council. So this would remove the staff review, and just go straight to the Subcommittee.
And then would there, is there a timeline associated with that, that facilitates with the budget process, so knowing that we...
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember McReynolds. So yes, so typically what is happening is that we do not receive our funding application until February, March of the new calendar year. However, we do start the application process three months in advance. So all of our contact lists who are interested in receiving, for example, community government block grant funding, or they go to find in December, we have like a web, a web meeting, and then we proceed with the application process. So with our proposed application process for the new fiscal year, we do anticipate taking this item to Hope and Solutions Subcommittee in February or March at the latest, and then ultimately come to the City Council in April, May, respectively.
And then, so my question to that is, do we need to codify, to be fair to Mr. Morley and his team in terms of putting the entire budget together, when that occurs, the Hope and Solutions Committee, or do you, as staff, is your recommendation just the new policy?
The recommendation would be essentially the new policy, because typically, the Department of Health, Food, and Development releases a funding to us, have a deadline in the month of May, which all allocation plans must be submitted to, to that federal agency to ensure that we receive our allocation by the line first deadline.
Okay, my next question is, the staff report mentions that the Hope and Solutions Committee has a role in white reduction, and I don't know if that's true, and then how are they achieving that, because that's just a mistake in the staff report.
So typically, what white reduction is, is in the description of the current Subcommittee. So typically, what light reduction is, is in the description of the current Subcommittee. However, light reduction in the two years I've been with the city have not came up at the Hope and Solutions Subcommittee meeting. And typically, those types of issues are either initially addressed by our Patrol Task Force, and of course, by Beautify and Maintain, which is also known as BAM, through Parks and Recreation.
Okay, and then in terms of going forward with staying on the topic of BAM and Patrol Task Force, what role do they have in terms of attending the Hope and Solutions Committee? And like, how do we codify to make sure? I mean, and my context is, in my opinion, this is a city council Subcommittee of three council members. Like, all homeless activities, housing should come under the auspices of this committee, regardless if it's in the police department, if it's in the community development, or Parks and Recreation. It all should be under this one auspices. So what role, how does Patrol Task Force and BAM roll into this?
So historically, BAM has not attended the Hope and Solutions Subcommittee meeting, but we will, of course, extend that offer so they can talk about the light reduction. The Patrol Task Force has typically, on and off for the last two years, presented reports on vagrancy within the community. However, what we're planning to do moving forward to ensure that the Subcommittee and the community members are aware of what's going on with our Patrol Task Force, is allowing Sergeant Vasquez of the Patrol Task Force to essentially make a presentation at the beginning of the meeting, so that he'll be able to write all the necessary updates, be available for questioning, and then we can also ensure that we have a representative from BAM as well in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, and then going with the housing element, so there's going to be the, there's an annual review of our progress towards achieving the housing, what's in the housing element. So will this committee receive that report and make a recommendation to the full council? Or how does that go?
So for the housing element, so we had to submit an annual progress report to the Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1 of each calendar year. So as we're making progress towards implementing the housing element, before we do a submission to the state, we can bring that to Hope and Solutions for the recommendation, have them basically confirm that, you know, they're signing off on it, and then before we submit it ultimately to the state, we can bring that to support the City Council.
What would be the typical, I'm not trying to create work.
So yeah, so the typical, the typical process what we've been doing is that we basically compile data throughout the calendar year to be able to report back to the state, to let them know in terms of what programs have been implemented, what programs are pending, and then also to the number of developments that are in progress, the ones that have been permitted, because we're trying to make sure that we're meeting our rate in the housing number allocation, our rate in numbers. So that's typically what we have done in the past, but in terms of making sure that our Hope and Solutions here is about housing as well as homelessness issues, we want to ensure there's transparency at that committee, so we'll be able to share that information with him as well. So it won't be a hurdle for us to be able to submit, to review that information with the Subcommittee on Numbers.
And does, is there any reason that it should come before the full council?
The only thing that we'll be asking for, if it would come forward to the full council, we would be asking for an endorsement of the report, and that would be to make sure that we can submit it timely fashion before April 1st of the vagrancy year.
I think my preference would be to get it, I understand that it could be after that timeline, but yeah, here's the, here's what's happened, here's what we've done.
Yeah, because typically what happens, Councilmember McReynolds, is that we submit the annual progress report to the state, the state reviews it, makes comments, and then they give us an approval, saying that it has been submitted timely, it's been approved for this particular year's annual progress report. And then what we can do thereafter, once we get that approval from the state, is that we can then bring it to the full council, so that council will be aware of the information that we have implemented, as well as the number of policy units that we have been developing within the community to meet our requirements.
The governor just issued an executive order, directing state agencies to start using state funding in municipal chambers, and then it's directed local jurisdictions to use state funding, something similar. How does Hope and Solutions fit into that edict from the governor?
So, thank you for the question. I think that the way that Hope and Solutions will fit into that is that any action that we take will be reported to Hope and Solutions, and that any potential actions that the city is looking to take related to housing and homelessness would go before that Subcommittee. In the case of this specific edict from the state, the city and the, the city has basically not changed our course of action. We assist with, with the state agencies and their incumbent removal, but we haven't changed our policies internally for how we operate on city, on city land. If that were to potentially change, and if we had potential changes to that policy, that would be something that would go before the Subcommittee for review as well.
And then my last question is going to be kind of three parts, is that we have the homeless, homelessness prevention and diversion program, we have the shelter program, we have the mobile home rehabilitation loan. All of these are listed as services that we do to prevent homelessness or under the auspices. There's no mention in the work plan of those programs, but I would like to see if there are changes, updates on those programs, but those would also come before the Hope and Solutions Committee.
We can absolutely do so. Effectively, those are within the other categories that were listed, so that's why they weren't specified and called out, but absolutely, those programs can be brought before the Subcommittee for review and staff updates.
Okay, that's kind of my question regarding the staff report. Last question is, procedurally, how does this move forward if council approves its name? The work plan, does it come back as an ordinance, or what's the procedure, what are the next
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember McReynolds. On a previous motion council made earlier this year, the one part that was to be codified in the municipal code was the actual scope of this Subcommittee. So in the staff report, there's listed the six areas near the top of the staff report that the Subcommittee would address, and so we would take those and create a section in the municipal code that outlines those general subject matter areas for the Subcommittee as that Subcommittee's purview or work plan if we will. So we would return with an ordinance, consent at a future meeting, that codifies that for council approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Halter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff, for this report. And I want to mention that, that by far the number one issue facing the state and the city, and probably the country, is housing, whether that be having enough housing, having affordable housing, which has gotten ridiculous, to providing housing for the unhoused that are living on our streets and in our parks. And so I've been honored to serve on this committee for the last two and a half years, and we went from a safe and clean to hope, trying to present something a little more positive than safe and clean, but I'm open to anything that's more descriptive. Wanted to just mention that. But it is a big lift, there's a lot going on, and I respect that staff has a lot on their table. I wanted to mention, though, that from my recollection, and some of it is just terminology, I think, is where we get bogged down. And I look at the fact that oftentimes, because of the shortage of rooms at City Hall and the short time that we have to have our meeting in, we get a little rushed towards the end. So I wanted to just throw that out as possibly why some of this got a little bit confusing. What was presented to us in the meeting in July was a tenant protection policy with a recommendation of doing a $500,000 outreach to, for an RFP, for somebody to look at tenant protection elements that may be included as needed by the city of Antura. I know, I believe, I know it was my intent, as one of the two that made the motion, was to bring that back in-house and have staff look at the different elements that make up tenant protection, to see what's plausible, what's needed, and what is desired by our city, and by all the stakeholders in our community, whether they be those in-house, whether they be people who are in need of services, or people searching for that affordable housing, or whether it be property owners that are providing the housing. We need to hear from all stakeholders. And that was our direction, and that was a motion that passed that day, was doing outreach, led by city staff to do outreach to all those stakeholders. I guess what I have, I question about is item number six, under the analysis of the work plan for this Subcommittee, its tenant protection policies, we're yet to develop those policies. So I guess that's just a category, saying tenant protection policy, we have to determine what those policies and what elements would be part of those policies, correct?
That's correct. Effectively, anything related to tenant protection would go before the Subcommittee to be discussed and get recommendations before moving forward to City Council.
I think the part that confuses it a little bit is because of what's going to happen later tonight on 9/13, because it looks like there's already a policy being considered without first going to all the stakeholders to see what's needed and what we would all support. And so I just wanted to throw that out as a concern, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues that sit on it, maybe with me, to see if they remember that meaning differently than I do.
Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, staff. I just had a question. Well, first of all, the topics that we have, the six that you've listed on this report, are obviously all things that our committee is working on right now, but I wanted to get some clarification. On page four of the staff report, towards the middle, it says, "After deliberations, the Subcommittee voted 3-0 to recommend that the City Council approve the tenant protection work plan." Can you let me know what that work plan is?
Sure, so I'd be happy to talk through the tenant protection work plan, but that's actually, the agenda is made up for later in the evening. I know it relates to this specific work plan, but I don't want to get us too far into that direction. Do you want me to still answer, or do you want to wait for the other item?
Let me answer. The direction that we gave was basically for public outreach. That was the plan, and we come back with that information. So I just want to make sure that we're not thinking that there's this, I mean, that was the first, the first thing that we need to get done. I just want to make sure that we're not, we don't have something already in place. We need to get all that information, if I had not, that's, it's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, because I know there are a lot of people in the room here tonight for that item, the, you know, the tenant protection plan that we're, was like, is really the first step based on the conversation and the recommendation from the Subcommittee. It was really to go back and engage with the community, as you said, to determine what those future steps are. So the basis of the program we'll talk about later tonight, but that was really the direction that we're moving in.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Oh, by Councilmember Campos.
If she wants to... I wouldn't. Okay, my question is clarifying a question regarding, and we'll stay on the tenant protections topic, but it's not related to that necessarily. So I want to understand, so the housing element was approved by HCD, and the authority on the recommendation to council is with the planning commission, regardless of it being under the Hope and Solutions Committee? Or how does that specifically work? And it could be any topic, I'm just going to...
So I think there was a little bit of confusion about what the housing element required, and I think there was confusion from staff's side as well in the past, so there may have been, there may have been confusion about how it was exactly laid out. I don't have the housing element in front of me, I apologize, but effectively, the housing element requested that the planning commission review some of the specific plans related to housing and homelessness. And I think the thought was that that would open up the planning commission to review all topics on homelessness. They already look at housing policy today, specifically when it relates to zoning text amendments that create the housing policy and the zoning ordinance. So, you know, if they, so really, you know, by selecting Hope and Solutions as the Subcommittee that deals with these issues, there are certain things that legally are required to go to the planning commission when you invent the zoning ordinance, for example, or reviewing that one specific plan that was referenced in the housing element. But overall, most of these topics, particularly on the homelessness side, will fall to the Subcommittee. Where there's overlap, we will go to planning commission first, then to the Subcommittee, and then to City Council. So recommendation from planning commission, to the council, recommendation from the Subcommittee, council, and then a council final decision. But we would, we would allow both to review when there is overlap, rather than only go to one.
Thank you.
Councilor Campos.
I want to thank you all for all the work that you've done in the time I've been on this Subcommittee. It's amazing what you've been able to accomplish in a very abbreviated time span of meetings. I love the idea of a new name, and the work plan looks very solid to me. I think we need to really get on top of the space problem, so that the meetings can progress smoothly and not be rushed at the end. And I know there's a lot of staff that will be involved in that, not just the, the, or the community development staff, but I do want to share how hard you all work, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, just a point of privilege, are we really trying to stick to questions, or can I be making comments as well?
Let it fly.
Thank you so much. You know, I appreciate what you were saying this time about the housing element. I will note, and I just moved off the page, that, you know, it does say, for example, that tenant protection policies will be, and I'll through public hearings at the planning commission, and I'll find the timeline here. The, it was supposed to come to council before now, and I, has, has the planning commission had any hearings on tenant protection policies? No. Thank you. And, and the last planning commission meeting was in April, is that correct?
I believe so, and we have another one scheduled for next week, or I'm sorry, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, thank you. To respond to some of the questions you had about this, and you know, I was, I was at the meetings when they were, it was the homelessness Subcommittee, so 10 years ago? 12 years ago? And so the reason we have some of this stuff about blight and BAM, here's what happened. So it was homelessness, then it was homelessness and affordable housing. And then we had the Safe and Clean Initiative, and that started off as blight, and then Safe and Clean 2.0 brought in homelessness. That was when we brought in Meredith Hart from the DVP to manage Safe and Clean. She was the Safe and Clean manager or director. And Meredith, Ms. Hart, coordinated a lot of those things. This was somebody who I, as a resident, if it was, if it was a mattress on the street, if it was somebody passed out in the bathroom at a park, those were all under her purview. So, so it was Safe and Clean, and then the committee made the unfortunate name change to Safe and Clean. The only people in favor of that were the three council members that were sitting on this Subcommittee at the time. And, and so what happened was, we still have this, this committee, which is really a rebranded Safe and Clean Committee, but what's happened since then is we no longer have Safe and Clean. Instead, we took homelessness and moved it into the Community Development Department, and we took all the other stuff and put it in the Parks and Recreation Department under BAM, Beautify and Maintain. And the genesis for BAM, when it came up here and it was kind of just like, here's an idea for you guys to, I haven't, we haven't figured out the details, we don't know how it works, but you got to prove it, and it included a lot of work with homeless residents. Now, when I found out about the plan to compensate homeless people for cleaning up our streets with gift cards, I had a fit. And I said, "We don't do that. We don't, we don't pay people in gift cards because they are homeless." And so the idea of the BAM bands going to the arch and picking up homeless, well, at that point, sheltered residents, so that they can clean the city streets for sub minimum wage, that done. Okay, so we now have a completely different setup in the city. When we talk about blight, when I was chair, Councilmember Brown was adamant that we continue to have blight within our purview. I opposed it, but the Subcommittee was not going to get anywhere. Now we have this other issue, which is, well frankly, you know, we had a higher city manager who very clearly, I mean expressly told me that he wanted to wind down the Safe and Clean Hope Subcommittee and have it go through the planning commission. And so we do have things like the tenant protections will be going to, will be going to the planning commission on a regular basis. All of them is still up in the air. I bring this up, because I'm not here, I'm not going to be here when you all have to fix this. I don't know how we proceed tonight, we have to proceed tonight on some of this, when it's housed, I mean, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but some members of that committee feel like the staff report does not reflect what they thought they were voting on, and I wish that had been cleared up before tonight. My last comment, Mayor, is one, and it's, and it's for everybody in the room that intends to make a comment, which is that the Subcommittee is only for council members. It advises the council, they don't... It advises the council. They don't have the power to pass anything. They don't have the power to veto anything. Ultimately, it is the city council that can do these things. We can move forward with the other item. It's hard for me tonight with this without having some clarity of what did or did not happen that day. Those are my comments, Mayor. I'm, I'm a lost one. Thank you.
Mr. Halter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff. I just wanted to, while we're able to get comments, I wanted to, for me, we all have, or in your sense, it's a way of self-solving problems. And for me, they've worked fairly well in my life. And what I look at is my holistic family. So what I need, and I know the information is out there, it's just in many different places. So it's looking at type of housing that exists in our city, what that bell curve is from affordable to very unaffordable. Okay, to, and, and then looking at the service providers are providing focus on certain populations that are in need of affordable housing and some that may be unowned. And seeing what debts may be associated with or rooms may be associated with those populations and looking at the funding. So therefore, once you have, that's just a summary of what I see in the big picture. And then figuring out the critical path so that we can actually have a dashboard that makes sense on how we are accomplishing the goal that we're trying to achieve, which is a leading need for anybody to ever live on our streets or in our parks and in our riverbanks and making sure that everyone has housing that's not such a matter. Okay, and allowing the young people with a safe hood and students to spread their roots in our community. And maybe so, in doing so, we might find those businesses where 73% of our workforce comes outside Ventura for every single day, 27 and a half miles each direction, and try to bring those businesses back to our city because we have the housing that supports them. Okay, without that big picture and finding that critical path, it's very difficult for me to just throw a dart at that board and say, this is the solution and that's the solution. Because having lived as long as I have in the state of California and seen so many well-intended policies and lived to see all the unintended consequences, I definitely don't want to add to that. I want to find the solutions and I feel a piece now. So that's what I would keep begging for and keep trying to encourage us all to work together to get that big picture. The same goes for climate change. If we all do what each one of us can do to be part of the solution, I believe we will solve it. But we have to all know what we can do. We have to break it down so we can figure out the critical path. That has worked for me my entire life and I'm sure, sure as hell, like the bridge to council as, as a way of solving problems and with the staff, with the help of the city staff. So that's what I'm looking for. And I know we have all the information. I know we're all eager to solve this problem, but I'm very afraid of making decisions in the back.
Councilor McReynolds.
Just a final clarifying question. Again, this is just dealing with the HOPEs and Solutions Committee. As staff, you believe that if we were to approve this tonight, that all topics regarding homelessness from all departments, police, community development, Parks and Recreation, will be coming before this settlement?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
If my colleagues have asked their questions, I'd like to move to, for a vote.
Deputy Mayor, I believe we need a public comment first.
Oh, public comment. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, do you have comments or?
I do have a comment. I, you know, I, I really appreciate everybody that has stepped up to serve on the homeless, I'm sorry, the HOPEs Subcommittee, Councilmember Campos, Councilmember Halter, and Councilmember Duran. Mayor, I hope you realize that you were probably the first mayor in history to have four people that were willing to serve on that at the same time. In the past, that has been, and I'm sure you can speak with some former mayors, one of the more difficult subcommittees to find people to serve on. And I think we also need to bear in mind that, you know, if we want, it's true, homelessness touches every department that we have. That does not necessarily mean that every department needs to be showing up at every, every HOPEs meeting to explain what they're doing on that. There has, there has to be more clarity on this. And I will say this as somebody who was chairman of the HOPEs Committee, and several times I was the only council member to show up for the meeting. It requires tremendous engagement, involvement, and commitment by those members. And I, I will point out that, you know, we are talking about a HOPEs Committee that would be, would have, you know, probably four or five times the workload of any of our other subcommittees. I'm just throwing that out there. I look forward to hearing what the public has to say about this and hearing the, my comments, hearing my colleagues' other comments there. I apologize if I seem scatter-minded. There's a lot here. Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, Mayor, if.
Let me clarify on Councilmember Reynolds' question in regards to what other departments with their involvement in regards to patrol task force or BAM. I think it would be appropriate for them to report maybe their kind of efforts to the HOPEs and Solutions Committee, but not report in terms of getting direction on their action, just to clarify, like, kind of reporting what they aren't doing or maybe service statistics, but not necessarily taking direction in terms of their work plan.
My, my concern is to Councilmember Halter's point that I want this committee to have a holistic approach. Everything, I don't necessarily, if they're making decisions, that's not my point, was that they're getting the whole picture. And they're able to then make decisions, recommendations for the full council based on having that whole picture so that I'm not asking the police department, Parks and Recreation to come forward on these items.
Yes, absolutely. Understood. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a perceived notion that HOPEs and Solutions would be directing patrol task force ideally as a, or a BAM.
And I think Councilmember Johnson correctly points out that we don't need every department, every committee, you know, but if we do need them there, they will be there.
I believe people from patrol task force absolutely, if our department had a manager over BAM, could be present as requested, yes.
Thank you much. Public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. We have received email communications, which have been posted online. We do currently have nine speakers, but I anticipate that we could get 15 or more as we go along. And we are experiencing some audio issues on YouTube. So if you are trying to access the meeting, please do go to the city's website and access the webex.
Okay, so as of right now, you have nine speaker cards on this side.
As of right now, nine speakers.
Okay, and once we start, then there's no more speaker coming on?
No, we accept speaker cards as we go along.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's get started. Three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify a second? And maybe the city attorney. Because again, this is the HOPEs and Solutions work plan. This is not the item coming forward as item 13. Right, so just if people, if their comments, you can clarify.
Thank you, Councilor McReynolds. You read my mind. I just wanted to clarify for the public. On this item, it is just voting to approve the subcommittee's work plan. And the work plan is just those six subject matter areas. It's not endorsing any particular policy or approach. It's just saying the subcommittee, subcommittee is going to work on these six areas. And so we just want to clarify that before public comment. I think the more substantive discussion will come on item 13, on, you know, how people feel about a particular issue. So just want to lay that out before people make public comment on just the subcommittee work plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
Mr. Duggan.
Our first speaker is Gina Booch, followed by Pat Healy. You each have three minutes.
Is that Gina?
Okay. Pat Healy, followed by Delve Trainor.
Hi, I'm Lee, Ventura County Council, County Council Association of Realtors. I actually rest in both item three and 13. Is that all right?
No.
I just go to 13, come back from 14.
Yes. Thank you very much. And thank you for asking.
Good evening, and I apologize, I might have to ask the same question. We are, I can talk about the tenant, the plan. Is that correct? I was in that meeting, by the way, on July 15. So can I talk about it?
So the. Go ahead. Sorry. No, go ahead. Yes, yes, you may. But just so you understand, the only item before council on this item was just, what will that subcommittee generally talk about? And it's just six broad subject matter areas. The actual specific policy issues is what they'll dig into more on item 13. But you are welcome to make a public comment on this item as well.
All right. Well, let me make a public comment now then. My name is Adelle Trainor. I'm a community member. I am a real estate agent, and I was in that meeting on July 15. As I told some colleagues earlier today, I'm cranky today. I've had a long day, busy, and I'm a little less cranky. But part of my crankiness was because when I read what was coming forward, it's not what I understood, that meeting on July 15. And some of it is just, don't use language of the city's path towards tenant protection initiatives. That doesn't sound like a conversation to me. And I thought we're moving forward to, let's have a conversation. I've been asking for a long time on this particular committee, hey, I'm a community member. I'm in the field, working with property owners and people who are looking for housing. I've got something to add. And Doug, no one asks me. I have not been invited to the table. And that's all we've been asking for is, we've got, oh, not just the Association Realtors, Realtors, people in the field, the California Association of Realtors, national, we've got a lot of stuff behind us. We've got something to contribute. We want to help with this issue. So when I see this and it feels like, oh, we're just going to move forward and no one's asking me, yeah, I get a little cranky. So really, that's what I want to say about that. I was in that room. I did not understand that this was going to go forward. What I understood was we were going to allow the, maybe the HRC to begin their work with counseling and with giving information and workshops for the community, but not, you know, not moving forward with, with something that we never even had a chance to talk about and work out. I believe in this community, we have the capacity to come together, kind of like what you said, Doug. We have the, the sense to figure things out. This is a complicated issue. But in all my years in this community and working with issues and events, I have never felt cranky, a little blindsided, like I felt when I read this. So I've said my piece. I'll be around. I am still willing. I want to help. I don't give up easy. And those of you who know me, you know that. So thank you for your time and also thank you for your service, all of you, staff included. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Matt Caprito and Kami Pensak.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You know, I've attended the HOPE Subcommittee for a number of years. And at the conclusion of the last meeting, council members were very clear and agreed to engage in outreach with stakeholders. That's it. So why we have, we're doing anything else, I'm, I'm really not clear about that. This has been promised for multiple years. Instead, staff on their own has brought this agenda item to you for consideration. And I'm troubled. This should be troubling for all of us. This was not agreed to. Do you know what the real world, if, if anyone's staff went outside the direction of council, of leadership, they're peppered. I'm not really sure how we got to listen to the tape. I, I ask you, implore each of you to listen to the recording and you will see it's very clear. The only thing that was asked was to engage in outreach. So what you have before you was never agreed by the subcommittee. It, more importantly, has no community involvement, no input, no ideas. We don't even know the specific issues faced by the residents. There's no outreach to stakeholders and there's no solution. I, I tell you, I, I think we can do better. This is so disappointing to me. And this is not an indictment of staff. They're not bad people. I'd love to hang out with staff. They probably wouldn't want to hang out with me. But the bottom line is, we need to do better. This is not what was, this is, this should not be on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kami Pensak, followed by Jorge Deleon.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kami Pensak. I am the 2024 president of Ventura County Council Association of Realtors, representing over 2,000 housing professionals in West Ventura County. I support clear direction of the subcommittee as well as collaboration and clear communication with all stakeholders. Our association is made up of housing experts and have abundant resources in terms of research capabilities and policy expertise. And we are eager to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jorge Deleon, followed by Stephanie Calvo.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jorge Deleon. I live at 205 Virginia Drive here in Ventura, in the Hollis District. I was looking at speakers that, that afternoon, July, but I also remembered that back in March 26th, if I'm not mistaken, you actually had a direction, a very clear direction as to be able to engage and, and look for ways for us to, you know, get the community engagement. As a speaker on July, I clearly remember that there was, you know, one item, one to not look for an RFP, but there was a direction, a recommendation for community engagement. Okay, community engagement, which has not yet happened. Yet in the incentive agenda item, there are specific guidance that aren't not necessarily what we heard. And as Mr. Derek Halter actually mentioned, there's a little bit of confusion as to what happened, right? And what we read on the proposal. And here I am just in, in objecting to how it's been presented and actually imagine how comments were given to evoke it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Calvo, followed by Luis Lamparo.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Calvo. I serve as the president and CEO of Ventura Chamber of Commerce. We have about 700 members that represent about 25,000 employees here in Ventura. I too am concerned about the process. I attended the meeting on July 15. I also spoke at the HOPEs and Solutions Committee meeting that evening or afternoon. And my recollection is the subcommittee did not recommend approval of the tenant protections work plan. The subcommittee only provided direction to extend public outreach. So Councilmember Johnson, I agree with you and truly wish that this had been kind of cleared up before this evening because I think when this item came out, it was very confusing to the public. It feels a bit like a cart before the horse, particularly when item 13 tonight is dealing with more specifics of the tenant protections. For those of us who've been in sales, we're all familiar with the term of presumptive close. This feels very much like a presumptive close. I believe that such a controversial and disruptive decision deserves at the very least a robust, fact-based discussion with broad input from all stakeholders, not just one side or the other. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luis Lamparo, followed by Janet Swirslaw.
Good evening, Luis Lamparo of Ventura County Cola. I want to build on what Ms. Calvo said. And speaking to specifically an item on the work plan, the section for tenant protection policies, it is clear that there is a cloud of confusion surrounding this particular paragraph. What is in the staff report does not seem to align with the transcript of the HOPE Subcommittee meeting nor the recollections of a few of the committee members. So I urge the council to clarify on the record before you vote. So I urge the council to clarify on the record before you vote, what exactly is being approved in the HOPE Subcommittee work plan? Let's avoid accidentally approving the acceptance of a plan and policies that, based on deliberations tonight, clearly haven't even been established yet. Clear up the record, clear up the staff report, be sure that the motion made tonight is very clear that this is being worked on, it is not being adopted, it has not been approved, it's a work in progress. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janice Prusler.
My name is Janice Prusler, and I am the broker owner of rent 805, servicing about 45 properties in the city of Ventura. I'm also a part of the National Association of Residential Property Managers. I think the key words confused me tonight. It seems as though we're not really sure what happened between that meeting, which I was at as well, I was also at that meeting that Jorge Delion spoke about earlier, where we have constantly said the housing providers would like to have a seat at the table, though there have been many meetings, and each time we show up, we really want to be a part of the discussion, we are not asked to have a seat at the table. And it seems like the thing can be a little biased at this point, and it's concerning, because I support clear direction of the Subcommittee with all stakeholders being a part of it. You know, these stakeholders are our housing providers, we have the knowledge and the resources to give you information that's very clear-cutting and concise, in fact, you'll see more about it later when we talk about, you know, Agenda Number 13. So with that said, you know, we would like to have a seat at the table, we would like to have our voices heard, we would like to be a part of the solution, I don't know, Realtors are out there, but can't find a solution, the problem, because this is how we live on the daily. So we'd like to have a seat at the table. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and hopefully we could have less confusion, because I feel like we're a little cart before the horse is to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes our next speaker, just five and three.
Back to City Council, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mayor, I may have a suggested alternate motion that may, or a suggested motion for council to make that may clarify the situation a little bit, if you will. So instead of, as listed, to approve the HOPE and Solutions Subcommittee work plan, maybe an alternate motion could be, approve the updated scope of the Subcommittee based on the six items listed in the staff report, and direct staff to return with an ordinance codifying the scope and updating the committee name to the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee.
Okay, so basically, approve the updated scope, and that scope is best identified on, as the six items?
Yes, so taking out the work plan word, which I think has caused confusion. So instead, we would just say, approve the updated scope of the Subcommittee based on the six items listed in the staff report, and direct staff to return with an ordinance codifying the scope and updating the Subcommittee name to Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee.
And, and the assumption there is that staff can't do that without going out to the public and getting feedback, correct?
Well, the real, the real feedback on, I think the substantive work plan issue is what will be discussed in item 13.
Got it. Okay, Councilmember Compost?
I just wanted to clarify for the public, the last HOPE Committee meeting was on August 19th, so I think that there may have been confusion about when decisions were made to bring this to council. So July 15th, there was a long, long discussion, but it was not decided. August 19th, a motion was made, and it was approved to bring this to council at this time, it is not tenant protections being passed in item 13. It is a work plan to bring this to it, which will engage the community. Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. I will note that Councilmember Holter's interim deputy director said something, so could he go? If he has a reply to Mr. Hogan?
Yes, I do, thank you very much, said Councilmember Johnson. It's just, I, I like what Mr. Hogan suggests, with one caveat, on number six, tenant protection policies, starting with outreach to all stakeholders. And then that's, that's the motion I could, I could support.
Can you repeat that last part, Mr. Holter?
Starting with outreach to all stakeholders. On number six.
And Mayor, with that, I would actually like to bring staff back up to ask a question about that before I begin my comment.
Okay. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, there seems to be, and I'll talk about this in my comments, a little confusion about where this came from, but our housing element, which we did a couple of years ago then, it specifically obligates us to work on tenant protections, doesn't it?
Absolutely, that's right.
Okay. Does it give deadlines for some reason?
Absolutely, it does give deadlines, that we check in with HCD on an annual basis throughout our annual progress report. I do want to note that during the very lengthy process to certify the housing element, there were no changes made during the probably 18 months that we went back and forth with HCD, so none of the dates were adjusted to reflect the time that it took to get certification, HCD is well aware of that, so most of those dates are probably behind about 18 months because of that certification.
And you, but so, I mean, City Council was supposed to have already not, had, had recommendations made to us by, originally it was July 2024, correct?
That's right.
So, so, so this, so this idea of tenant protections didn't just pop up in a, in a Subcommittee, is that correct?
Absolutely, not only is it listed in the housing element, but a number of other city documents.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Holter.
Thank you.
You know, I don't have any more questions. So, so Mayor, I think I understand what's going on here, and, and this is what some of us would call pocket sale. It's clear from some of the emails we received on item number 13, that some people received, I'm guessing, emails or newsletters that really took liberties with what council was attempting to do tonight, and understandably, people are very, I don't know how else to care for his emails that are saying, we know you're going to do red caps. That's just not a thing, but the language of some of the emails is so, is identical, somebody wrote this, this language and sent it to people and said, you know, everything's a mess. From what I hear about on Facebook, similar things happen there. There is no tenant initiative mentioned in the staff report from the, from the HOPE Committee, it's the, it's the work plan, which council directed staff to go back and work with the HOPE Subcommittee on. The, the thing that gets me, Mayor, is this is something that we have been talking about for years now. We talked, certified about tenant protections way back when, because it was, it was almost a year before we had our housing element actually approved by the state. So this is something that we've been talking about almost my entire time on council. We have a public process that includes Subcommittee meetings, that is what means to have a seat at the table. We obviously have special interest groups that want to have one-on-one face meeting, face, face meetings with the city attorney, the city manager, department managers, that's okay in some situations, but it's also how nothing can happen in a city. There are so many people tonight that talked about having been to so many of our Subcommittee meetings where these things have been discussed, this has not been a secret, this is not coming out of nowhere. If what you know came from email or newsletter, then maybe it's a surprise, and I'm sorry that that's the case, but, you know, and we'll talk about this in, in number 13, none of this is coming from a vacuum. The idea of community engagement, sure, the staff report that went to the HOPE Subcommittee in July talked about the need for community engagement on this part, and, and the staff report coming to us, it talked about it as well, that was never cut out, that's always been part of the plan. There will be, I'm sure, workshops, but we all, I think, need to understand that no special interest groups, whether it's tenants, or renters, or auto center dealers, get to go behind the scenes and try to kill things that council wants to do, or to push something to the council that council is reluctant to do. And so if you are one of the recipients of those emails, I hope that tonight you listen and take this at our word when we say that this is what's happening with the work plan, this is what's happening with, with item number 13. Because if we're going to have a conversation and want to have a seat at the table, it helps if you're not coming with misconceptions, and it helps if you're not assuming that anybody, whether it's landlords, or tenants, or council, or staff, that any of them are acting on that thing. So I really hope we can make some progress with this, Mayor. I don't know that we need the, the language from number six, so I won't be seconding that as, I believe it was a substitute motion, but I look forward to anything Mr. Hogan for limiting himself to make it more clear, exactly what it is that we're putting in the purview of the HOPE Committee. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Durant? Mr. Reynolds?
I, I just, I want to bring us back to just the HOPE and Solutions Committee, I mean, with all due respect, Councilmember Alter, I agree with Councilmember Johnson, all we want is that if we ever talk about tenant protections, it's the HOPE and Solution Committee that's going to talk about it, with no, no caveats, they will make, you know, you as the chair would make a recommendation to the, with, along with the two other members to the full council. All this does is give you the auspices by which to talk about, and that could be any number of things that you guys make a recommendation. I think the idea is to keep this general, just so that if this topic comes up, this is where it stops first, on it, on it. So I, I agree with Councilmember Johnson, I, I don't want to add, with community outreach, I think that's an item for 13, and we could, we should discuss that, but for just the committee, I think it's the six items per, the, from the direction of the city attorney with that on it. The only other thing that I would like to add is, I appreciate Councilmember Johnson's invaluable experience kind of walking us through some of that history, is if we can bring it back in, in a, a shorter time, like how long would it take to bring that ordinance back before the full council?
I thank you for the question, Councilmember Rick Reynolds, I, we should be able to, I don't think it would quite be ready for the September 10th meeting, but it should be ready for the next meeting after that, beyond consent.
That, that's the only thing I would ask, is that we keep it broad, and we get it back so that we can get Councilmember Johnson's insight while we still have his opportunity on that.
Okay.
Mr. Durant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Compost, you had made a comment about the last meeting we had, and I just, for clarification, what, what was your, what were you saying about our last meeting?
I was just clarifying the date of the last meeting.
Okay, and did you say we brought anything forward, is that we talked about deferral, the deferral program and the in- leave fees, which has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight, I was just getting clarification.
Well, we did, we did instruct the HOPE Committee to bring this to council to discuss the public engagement aspect, which is what item 13 really is.
Not our last meeting, our last meeting, we did the other two items, this, this was on July 15th.
Whatever you say.
Well, thank you. So what I'm hearing is, we, we're, we're going to bring this back, is that what I'm hearing?
So, see if I can bring this back. So the city attorney made a recommendation, and we consider a recommendation other than the one that we have in front of us, and that was about scope, updated scope, and we were City Council, and that, did we agree with, with that change? And there was a motion, and it was, somebody has to make that motion, did you make the motion? Mr. Holter?
Yes, yes, I said I was supportive of the motion if it included these words on item number six.
Okay, and was that seconded? Okay, do we have a second on the motion, Mr. Holter's motion?
I would love a second if we just did the reinstatement, would be under the auspices.
Okay, is that acceptable to you, Mr. Holter?
I have a comment on that, because there's some things that were said that I think needs some clarity, and then we could go from there. And that's the fact that the number of times that I've seen over the years, even, even including the last four years, that we have waited and waited to have conversations about something, and go to the next Subcommittee meeting, or to the next outreach meeting, and see that decision was already made, I probably can't count those times alone here. And so because of the sensitivity and the, the need for all parties to be involved in creating the best path forward, because we all want the same thing, okay, is, I think it's important that we all have the trust that there will be public outreach to, to all stakeholders. That's why I feel that's, it's a small task to do, add those few words to this line item, and then that's before item 13. But I think the number of times, whether it's seeing different heights of buildings appearing in different places on a work plan, or see a letter go out that was, we all wondered where that letter come from, there's been missteps, again, we're only as good as our organization, we're only as weak as the snake, somebody who thinks that they take cripples, so I get that, but we're all trying really hard, and I'm talking about creating trust that we will go out and seek input from all, all stakeholders, and I think that's, that's an important few words, but in that.
Mr. City Council, can you read the motion?
Sure. Can I please have clarification from Councilmember Rick Reynolds? Did you add something?
Oh.
So we have Mr. Hogan's motion, or amended motion, to approve the updated scope based on the six items listed in the staff report, and for staff to return with an ordinance codifying that scope, and then for the, the name to change to the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee, and then Councilmember Holter's addition to the item six, to begin with, starting with outreach to all stakeholders. And yes, I will not second that.
Okay.
No. I'm sorry, so, so point order, so what we have is, you have your motion, you are suggesting a friendly amendment, you made a substitute motion.
No, he made the motion, Councilmember Johnson.
Oh, okay, okay, so now? You would try, okay.
So do we have a second to Councilmember Holter's motion? Do we have a second to Mr. Holter's motion? It dies for a lack of a second, do I have another motion?
I'd like to move the recommendation of the city attorney with the language regarding tenant, so the six items, Councilmember Johnson's something here, be affordable, so the topics of the Subcommittee's work, I don't know if we used the word, scope, will be affordable housing policies, annual reporting, community development block grant, home investment fund, tenant homeless programs and policies, sorry, homeless programs and policies and tenant protection policies, will be under the auspices of the renamed HOPE Committee.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
No, I, I'm going to go, I'm, I'm gonna second it, but I want to make sure we're clear, we are not, we're not doing anything that other than this is what the committee is working on.
It's, yes.
That is affecting Councilmember Compost already, that seconded the motion, she needs to get it.
Okay, further questions? Vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion, double?
Mayor? Mr. Holter?
I wanted to mention that I will support the motion, but only knowing that we have item 13 coming up, where I'll make sure that we do everything we can to put the words that just described into that, because I'm, all I'm trying to do is build trust in our community, and to me, it was. Because all I'm trying to do is build trust in our community, and to me it was a simple task, but I understand where my calling comes from, and I'd like to move this forward, so I'll just support it in the, in the vein, being a team, a player here, make sure we forward.
And I think we understand where you're coming from as well.
Thank you. You may now adjourn. Waiting on a few more votes, all votes have been entered. Seven options in motion carries.
Thank you for that. Under the formal item number 12, purchasing of four fire engines, Chief, and Barbara McCormick, and Mr. Morley. How's everybody doing tonight? Who's going to lead this presentation?
Do that again. Good morning, good evening, Mayor Schrader, and members of the council, my name is Barbara McCormick, I'm the city's fleet and facilities manager. Here with me tonight are Public Works Director Charlie Ebling, Fire Chief David Ndaya, and Chief Financial Officer Greg Morley. We're here to provide information regarding the purchase and replacement of four of the fire department's fire engines. The Fleet Services Division is responsible for the maintenance and replacement of all of the city's 458 vehicles and equipment. This includes the fire department's 15 apparatus vehicles. These 15 vehicles consist of aerial ladder trucks, fire engines, and a hazardous materials vehicle. The four vehicles that are identified for replacement are planned per the 25-year fire apparatus replacement plan. Fire engines have an approximate 20-year life for the National Fire Protection Association, which maintains standards and codes for fire protection. Replacement costs for these vehicles are collected through an internal service fund, and accumulate in a dedicated fire apparatus cash account. Funding is held in the fire apparatus cash account until it's time to replace vehicles. These four engines have a four-year build period. Three of the engines were put in service in 2007, and the fourth in 2008. Starting the build process now will allow for the new engines to be put in service as the current engines are scheduled for retirement. Should we begin the process now, the three that have been in service since 2007 will be replaced one year past their service life, and the fourth that has been in service since 2008 will be replaced at the 20-year mark. We are recommending that the order for the replacement for the four engines be placed this fiscal year based on a four-year build period, current condition assessment of the vehicles, age of the fire apparatus when the new engines would be placed into service, standardization of current fire department operations and procurement efficiencies. The cost to purchase the four engines is $5.2 million, which is 5.5% below the manufacturer's suggested retail price. With contingency, fire suppression, fire suppression tools and equipment, the 100% prepayment discount of $605,000, and the $40,000 discount to purchase four engines at once, the total potential cost is $5.4 million. The fire department and fleet services has researched electric and hybrid electric fire apparatuses to determine if it would be a viable option to replace the current fire engines. The current cost estimate per engine for an electric fire engine is $2.5 million, which is $1.2 million above the cost of the internal combustion engine before the discount. Electrical infrastructure upgrades will be needed at each station to support the charging needs of these vehicles. The estimated cost per station for electrical, the electrical upgrades is about $1 million, which is above the cost of the purchase price of the engines. Staff will continue to research electric vehicle technology for future purchases. The detailed recommendations are contained in the staff report. In summary, staff recommendations are to approve and authorize the agreement with South Coast Fire Equipment not to exceed $4.7 million with a $200,000 contingency, authorize prepayment discount in execution of a lease purchase agreement with PNC Financial, and approve the necessary budget appropriations and transfers. With that, we're available to answer any questions.
Council questions? I would compliment staff on the hundred pages that we got on, that really helped us understand that fire engine is not a simple task, and there's a lot of things you can consider, so thank you for that. Questions from Councilmember Johnson? Sorry, my queuing system apparently isn't working.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you know, as we've looked at adding stations, and as we've looked at adding the paramedics' squads, is that going to reduce some of the miles per year that each of the, each of our apparatuses will be in?
Yes, I'm going to say with every apparatus we add, anything like a paramedic's squad and an additional station, the math again, with people out, the engines are going to be running fewer calls if we have a station that adds a seven year.
Thank you. So hopefully, when we get to a 15-year mark, it'll, they'll be looking better than they happened in 15 years?
Correct.
Wonderful. I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank staff for all the work on putting all of these pieces together. Mayor, this was one of the first things we dealt with, and I was dispirited at times, but I think we really, it's taken a lot of people, it's taken a lot of negotiations, but I am so proud of the changes that happened with our fire department, and that is one of the things I'll be most proud of, I believe. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Mr. McReynolds, followed by Mr. Halter, followed by Mr. Durant.
So I have a question on the, the payment. So these, each fire truck is $1.2 million. So, and then we're getting a $150,000 discount because of the prepayment purchase, but if we were to hold on to the $1.2 million and just forego that, wouldn't we generate more interest in our accounts than the discount?
You're absolutely correct. So we have two options before us, one is to make 100% prepayment, the other one is enter into a lease purchase agreement where we don't have to make the prepayment, giving us the opportunity to continually reinvest that cash that we don't present as an outlet, and make interest on that money over the four years while these engines are being built, and actually put ourselves in a better cash position, and are probably a lower cash outlet again.
So it seems that's a significant task. And then just a question on, you've got a $1.2 million purchase, and they give you, as you're ordering four at the same time, they give us a $10,000 discount, seems a little ridiculous, I mean, on a $5 million purchase.
That's right, they're offering $10,000 per vehicle that we're producing.
Thank you.
If I could add to that a little bit, originally we had this discussion, and Ms. McCormick did come and tell us that they were offering this $10,000, and we had a discussion that day, and asked her if she could ask for something better, and she negotiated and won this thing out of $600,000. So, yeah, it was $10,000 to begin with, but it ended up being $645,000. Their, their original offer was $10,000 per year.
Am I not reading it right, isn't that the staff report?
Yeah. But yeah, you're right, they were offering $10,000, we ended up with a $645,000 after this McCormick negotiation.
I apologize, I'm not seeing that. In the staff, like, if I look at fiscal impact.
Yeah, because in the document, the staff report, they list in this two different things, one of, they list one as a prepayment discount, and the other one as just a discount for the multi-vehicle, multi-purchase, is that what you're talking about?
I'm just looking at the staff report, at the requested action, fiscal impact, I see a $40,000 reduction, I don't see a $645,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, the $600,000, the $650,000 reduction is incorporated into that original recommendation for $4,500,000. So originally it was $5,000,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Halter, then Mr. Durant.
Mr. Mayor, staff, I don't doubt in all the need, and I noticed that that might be a risk, a lot of deferred purchases and payments across the city. I wanted to know that, is there any help going in the vehicles that are being mentioned?
It is our practice to option them, and in the past we've received roughly $10,000 per vehicle, which is a big amount of money.
All right. Great, thank you.
Mr. Durant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, it's good to be with you again, thank you staff for your report. I have a question for you in regards to the squad program. I understand there's been reduced calls, like, Station Two and Three, like, there's been reduced calls for fire engines, is that correct?
I wouldn't say there's been reduced calls for fire engines, there, there's been reduced call volume because they're sharing the same call load out of the, out of the fire station.
But we're not, they're not, you're not sending an engine on every call with the squads, correct? And I understand that that's been a huge success in Station Two and Three, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So just a curiosity, if that is such a success, how come we're not looking at squads instead of fire engines?
I think, and I explained this previously, we definitely are looking at squads right now. The goal was to add by NFPA recommendation, based on our, on our fires, on our geography, and on the fact that we were still covering the city the same way after 36 years with no addition of any fire suppression or rescue equipment, we add that seventh apparatus, which we're doing, at Fire Station Seven, and then we moved on to squads, so that's how we got to Squad Two and Squad Three. And right now, we're not in a position to add anything additional just based on financing or staffing. So we did, that's exactly the order we went in, is we made one addition of one engine after almost four decades of not having an additional engine, but having our call volume increase, and which included fires and also rescues, and the difference in fires after 40 years of how fires burn. And as soon as we got that engine added to our staffing on a future roster and on the current roster, we added Squad Two and Squad Three immediately after that.
So, so the plan is to get more squads, we don't have to run our engines on every call?
Well, the plan will be to get more squads when we have somewhere to put them. Right now, we have at two and three, we are, we have five people in two stations that were never designed for five people. So right now, we are bursting at the seams, and that's going to be a whole other discussion, that's going to be a 50 to 60-year outlook of how we address our infrastructure, and the stations that are very small, built in 1950s. What I'd love to add, our stations were never designed for more than three people, half of our stations were designed for three. So if we add a squad, we have to add the rooms, the accommodations, the apparatus bay, the ramps, and all of that, so that's all going to be a much bigger fight. Right now, we're doing, they're surviving, but they're splitting rings and parking systems and issue and so forth, but we're making it work because of the impact to the service of the community.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Johnson?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Schrader, I just wanted to also add that, just to clarify that there are a limited number of suppliers of these types of apparatus, so I think Ms. McCormick did an excellent job sort of reaching out to the right suppliers, and negotiating a great price. Also, just want to point out that in terms of the cost, we are looking at the cost at this point also, I would want to wait longer, would recommend that we wait longer for this purchase, because as we all know, costs are scary.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, that actually answers one of my points, you know, Gold Coast, as we look at buying buses, our projections for the cost, especially now that there are only two builders of buses, is that the cost of the new bus is going to greatly outpace any rate of inflation or CPI. Chief, you know, when we talk about NFDA guidelines for apparatus and engine, every station needs an engine, correct?
Before coverage, it's called a 17 engines or assembly, is that FBA assembly? And so to have the right number of engines within the right number of response time, excuse me, given that they're all in the station at the same time, yes.
And, and some of those, some of those engines are definitely showing their age, right? If we have somewhere, there has to be trannies of kitty litter underneath them to catch oil, for example, and we, I'm sure we all have heard from some of our firefighters, just their concerns about that, right? So these, and these have been driven harder than maybe the expectations were, because we have so many calls for service, for us, it's an issue of miles, a mean odometer, let's say around 15 years, right?
Correct. Miles in general, and I would say, as Ms. McCormick talked about, we're right on track with ordering now to get those engines replaced right around the 20-year mark, which is our goal at this point. And I know previously, I'd say about five years ago, we discussed looking at a 15-year replacement cycle for these engines, just based on call volume and the lifespans are, this is fire service wide, not just in the city of Ventura, but that's an incredibly expensive proposition to try and replace these types of vehicles every 15 years versus every 20 to 23. And so right now, we're just, we're very grateful that we're close to getting on our 20 at this point.
Thank you so much, Chief, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Compost?
Thank you, Chief, and I, I requested about, often you come to us and you have statistics about how much, how many calls there are, what types of calls there are, how often the trucks go out, how often the squads go out. One thing that you can't predict or maintain clear statistics on is wildfires. Are we in a position to operate against a wildfire like we did with the Thomas Fire without new trucks?
I think the Thomas Fire is really not a good benchmark, because the answer is absolutely not. There's no single fire department anywhere in the state of California that's prepared to respond, that's why we had 2,400 fire departments and 8,000 firefighters here at the height of the Thomas Fire. So I would say, what I would call for, the threat to our community and my responsibility to care for our residents, is we are, we are well-prepared for our initial response, but I mean, and this is true throughout the county, is when there's a notified brush fire start, Ventura County Fire, Oxtone Fire, that fired in Ventura City, there's an engine that at least all four engines is going, because of what those can do as quickly as they can spread. So, but having, having Station Seven moving forward, and having the squads be there to pick up calls where the engine can go and do fire suppression, you know, and I think that's the thing that I think I've shared before, is you don't see our success stories every day because we put those out, because we get there quickly and we suppress the fire, and it doesn't make the paper. It's the ones that grow beyond our first two or three engines that we can't catch, that I send out a critical incident notification on. So we're going out every day, and there's car fires that are catching houses on fire, brush on fire that we're catching, and those don't make the paper, you know, you don't hear much about it because we do our job and we do it well. But, so to answer your question, I mean, the Thomas Fire is probably not the best benchmark, because the answer is no, but when we have, you know, I will call it a standard start, when we know there's red flag warnings, the wind is there, the weather's coming, I mean, we're on the, we're on the brink of that right now, we're ready to respond, we have a very robust initial attack using those engines, and having very good neighbors that come very quickly when we need their help, just like we do for them when they have a semi-emergency.
Thank you for that. If we don't order these engines, how long will we have that level of preparation?
I think the issue will be the reliability of the current engines, and I mean even more than I can, is Ms. McCormick and her fleet staff will tell you, that we are, we're holding several of these engines together at this point, and I think it's important to remember, it's not unlike what Councilmember Johnson was speaking to, with being able to procure vehicles right now, it's very difficult for a specialized vehicle, that's a two, two and a half decade vehicle, it's going to take a while to get here. So even with the engines that are the way they are right now, we're making them through us using them and through our fleet staff maintaining them and keeping them on the road to serve the community, it's going to be another four years when they arrive, by the time they get here.
Thank you for that, and you know that I will definitely support this, but I wanted to clarify our need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick question, so this is for four vehicles, correct? In, I guess, looking at the totality of our supply, do you anticipate any other vehicles having to be replaced, like these?
We do maintain a 25-year projection for all of the fire apparatus vehicles. The next one in line would be five years from now, based on the age of them.
When we, it will be when? Sorry. Oh, five years from now, okay. And if you want to, I mean, if this is going to take four years, like, are, is it going to come up quickly then to get approval to replace those? I'm just trying to-
It's just one other vehicle that's due for replacement, and that's when we would start to ask for it, isn't that?
Anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or public comments, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one public comment on this item. Philip Fields. Uh, is Philip Fields?
I respect, I respect your representation, I respect your发言.
We, we prefer to use the microphone, please, sir. We can't hear you. The microphone's too quiet there.
I respect the fire department, and I try to assist them. And I'm not here to be in the way. However, the previous emergencies we had in the, in our city, as climate change is producing more wildfires, it is sad to find that our, our fire department is not ready for evacuation, et cetera, et cetera. And it's sad to see Tiff and Diana. You have no leadership. You're a failure person. A leader goes with his partner, a leader loses all the time, a leader stands by its union, by his union. A leader is with his man. However, in virtue of climate change, continue blindly the policy of perpetuation of fossil fuel. To have us breathe fossil fuel, eat fossil fuel, drink fossil fuel, for us, for the firemen, for the children and grandchildren, it's not a sound policy. We gotta go beyond our limits. China being a poor country, by 1930, there are going to be 40% electric energy. Their vehicles, et cetera, 40%. However, from our federal officials, to our local officer, they want to crush and help us forever breathe fossil fuel, see our friends dying of cancer, and see our firemen suffering cancer. It is not a sound policy. You might want to consider, along the way, a new local physician. Consider electrical power, because it's necessary, it's a must, and the longer we ignore it and think it's gonna go away or we're gonna fix it at the last minute, it won't happen. We have no mobility, no truck, nothing to evacuate, and the previous emergencies of wildfires and cross-rampage, there was nobody to evacuate with chairs, et cetera, et cetera. And that is something that you guys have to think. You've got to go out of your box, and the community expects more of you, not only your words, but your actions. And, uh, though tonight we cannot solve it, anyway, I ask you to approve unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Halper. I think we should chat.
Are there any public speakers anymore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've got the speakers for the side of-
Back to the city council, the motion is required.
Moved, that we approve on staff's recommendations.
Moved in second. Mr. Grant, was that a second, second, or question?
Amen.
Amen?
Amen.
Please.
So, um, I, I just want to let you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna endorse this. I'm gonna support it. But, you know, we talked before about squads and things like that, and, you know, you've had great success with those. And I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're still on track to focus on taking care of our firefighters, making sure that we do have squads, because I know that when we had squads, when we have squads in those units, we have less calls for the fire engines to go out, which is, which is awesome, which gives people more sleep, which means that they're not going out on PTSD or whatever kind of lever, you know, and we get them back sooner. Whatever the case is, I give for the health of our firefighters. I just want to make sure we're still on track, looking at the bigger picture and looking at how we can support our firefighters.
If I may, absolutely. This is a replacement of old engines. So I mean, this, to me, those are two completely separate issues, is we have, if anything, I'm providing the firefighters with a safer engine that's reliable, that's going to get to the location safely and not be like, you know, wired together and break down and not be able to put the fire out and so forth. So this is going to take them from the station, deliver exemplary service to the community, and return them to the station safely to get back to their rest period if they get some rest. So what we're doing tonight is just approving, replacing old engines with new engines. I'm not adding engines and not considering adding more squads tonight in any way.
I totally understand that, and I spoke to some firefighters and they were telling me how, how bad the engines are, and of course I'm going to support that because I don't want them to have bad engines. And that's, and, and I say it does have something to do with it because, um, we still need to look for the plan of future, right? Because if we're using more squads, less engines, then we're not going to have to buy as many engines down the road because we'll be maintaining the road better. It's not going to be running under that all the time because we've got squads that sense.
It does, but I would say it will be very close unless we start to diminish service to the community. Because right now, we're replacing these engines right on track.
We, oh, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying not to get the engines, I'm just saying as we look forward, no, let's look at the, the stations that have the squads and see how well they're doing to start to replicate that so we can keep the health of our firefighters.
That's, that's awesome, and that's the plan.
Do it, yeah, absolutely.
Other questions, comments? If not, I'll go to a vote. Vote, please.
Okay.
Motion second to approve staff's recommendation.
You can help to vote. Seven eyes, motion carries.
Okay, on to item 13. And before we do that, we'll take a 20 minutes biological break. We'll be back at 7:26. Thank you.
Okay, let's get started, please. Okay, on to item number thirteen, Tenant Protection Work Plan and Professional Service Agreement with the Housing Rights Center. Um, Ms.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started, I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Um, thank you, Ms. Diamond. Uh, mayor, council members in the public, I just wanted to make one announcement before we begin this item. I'm a member of the public, uh, submitted an item to me alleging, um, uh, potential issues with, uh, council member usage of Facebook and a potential Brown Act violation. I, um, reviewed the issues on Facebook and with the three council members, uh, identified, and I did not find that they had done any type of, of wrongdoing regarding this item or any potential Brown Act violation and believe they can participate. So I just wanted to clear the air on that. And with, with that, I will turn it back to Ms. Diamond.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, mayor, council members, uh, community members here and at home. My name is Rachel Diamond. I'm the Community Development Director. Tonight, I also have Leona Rollins, the Housing Services Manager, as well as Rachel West, a management analyst within the Housing Services Division. And today we're talking about tenant protections. And there's one word that I'm not saying, and I think you can see it on the screen, and it's the Wordwork Plan. And I think that, um, we owe both the community, the council, um, and the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee a bit of clarification on what we're really doing here today, because I think that that term got us really caught up in the, uh, Subcommittee, um, item as well as this one, about what it really means and what we're doing here today. So the discussion today is really focused around the development of a tenant protections program. Um, the tenant protections program is something that's required in the housing element. It's one of the city council calls, and then there are other associated documents that I mentioned doing this type of program. So this really comes from both the council and the city adopted, um, documents. Initially, staff went out for an RFP for a robust tenant protection program, um, to have an outside firm really conduct, uh, the analysis with the community, conduct community engagement, craft the program, and come back. We received one response to that RFP, and it was for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think all of you are very well aware of our budget, and five hundred thousand dollars is what we have about how much we have budgeted for all of our housing element implementation for this fiscal year. And it really is meant to roll over and conduct the number of years of implementation. And so we do have limited resources. And so as a result, we took a lot of the, um, the prep work impacts to get this for REN starting. And the first thing, um, that we, uh, as staff wanted to do is really develop, kind of, the areas of focus related to this work plan. Um, the first is working with the Housing Rights Center, um, to provide tenant landlord services and education to the community and mediation programs. And this is really the bulk of what the tenant protection program really is, is providing legal services to the community so that they can deal with tenant landlord issues, and to provide a format for people to be able to ask questions and to report issues with their landlords as well. So that's a contract that's before you this evening to work with the Housing Rights Center in a more expanded, um, new contract that would allow for that type of program. Additionally, staff had recommended community engagement and ultimately a RFP to move forward in the future with the REN registry. What happened at the Subcommittee was that, um, the Subcommittee asked that, um, we move forward with the Housing Rights Center contract again, which is the bulk of this program. And that before moving forward with any additional items, that we do need to talk to the community at all stakeholders, a wide range of people that are involved in this, um, in this issue, um, which really affects everyone, um, in the community. And ultimately, um, the Subcommittee recommended that, um, we hold off on anything else before we, uh, engage with the community. So I really want to highlight that and be very, very clear that at this point, what we're moving forward with tonight is really the Housing Rights Center contract and then talking about, per the recommendation of the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee, moving forward in the future with community engagement and not taking any other action beyond that without coming back to the Subcommittee and to the city council for final adoption. So with that, I'll turn it over to Leona Rollins to give you a lot more details. So thank you so much.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. And I will begin with the presentation. So what are tenant protections? So tenant protections are legal measures designed to safeguard the rights and well-being of renters. And these protections can vary by jurisdiction, but most likely include things like just cause eviction, right to habitability, rent stabilization, and protection from harassment. Um, the path towards tenant protections has been, um, is involved with three different policies. The first policy being the six, um, cycle of our housing element. It's one of our implementation goals. The next one would be, uh, the, this fiscal year's city council goal, and as well when the planning commission made their recommendation, and then city council adopted the Ventura County Homeless Plan on March twenty-sixth of this year. They also gave us direction to work on tenant protection initiatives. So the HOPE Solutions Subcommittee, now named the Housing Homeless Subcommittee. On July fifteenth, um, of this year, the tenant protections was presented to the Subcommittee, and the work plan included legal services, community outreach, and RFP, also known as Request for Proposal, to develop a registry. During this particular meeting, we provided initial background information that was shared in the staff report. This includes Costa Hawkins. And for those not familiar with Costa Hawkins, Costa Hawkins is a measure that was passed in nineteen ninety-five, which essentially means that multifamily units, as well as single-family homes built after February first, nineteen ninety-five, cannot be subject to any sort of rent control or rent stabilization. We also have the California Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-two, also known commonly as AB fourteen eighty-two, which is a tenant protection act that passed in two thousand twenty. Um, without an act of the state, this, this bill would actually expire in twenty thirty. This was when we started seeing, um, different initiatives in terms of housing providers or landlords only being able to terminate their tenants for a just cause reason or no cause reason. And then finally, we have California City Bill five six seven, which is also known as the Homes Prevention Act. And under California City Bill five six seven, essentially, it provided more protections and also gave the city the opportunity to provide its particular services if they choose to do so. And additionally, we also talked about what's going on in our neighboring jurisdictions, which include the city of Oaxor and one of the city of Oaxaca. So during the Subcommittee meeting, there were six speakers who were familiar with a particular item. We had four speakers who did have to support, um, additional tenant protections over current state law, and two speakers who were actually moving forward with some standard protection program. Basically, the Subcommittee did, of all in a manner of speech, recommend that the city council approve the tenant protection program with the condition that city staff police the community and get community component first, and then return to the Subcommittee and council with additional recommendations. So at this particular time, the Subcommittee had recommended that we do not proceed with the actual registry. Um, we are going to engage with the public, and then we'll make a determination through feedback from the Subcommittee on how to move forward. And I'll turn it over to Rachel West.
All right. So currently, the city of Ventura does have a partnership with the city, or with the Housing Rights Center. And they do provide services for us, including fair housing counseling, general landlord tenant counseling, annual fair housing events, distribution of multilingual brochures, um, as well as in-person and virtual workshops. Um, we are expanding for a new contract with the Housing Rights Center, which will provide additional services that would include mediation services, housing clinics, educational outreach, and tenant referrals. Um, and these services would be provided to all of the, um, city residents, regardless of income level, as well as also having multiple languages. Um, so for the community workshop portion, um, staff will conduct a series of four community workshops. And these workshops are really to engage And these workshops are really to engage the community, to talk about the current state laws, as mentioned before, SB 567, as well as like AB 1482, and gather community feedback for as many people as possible. So this would include tenants, landlords, Realtors Association, real estate agents, community advocates, nonprofits, cause, literally to just give everybody an opportunity to share what their thoughts are, what they recommend, how they believe the policies and procedures should work like, and just incorporate all of that into this broader program. There will be two in-person workshops and two virtual workshops in October and November. If we go ahead and move forward with this, we will work with our communications team to solidify those dates, as well as post all of this information on social media so far aware. We'll have it on our city page, as well as also going out in the public with some flyers and posters just to get the word out to as many people as possible. This input will be used to craft the next steps for this program. And then we will return to the Subcommittee and council with recommendations that we've gathered from these workshops. So future action items is to complete these workshops by November 2024 and present all the feedback that we received to the Subcommittee and then further solidify kind of what recommendations we do want to bring forth for the program and working along with city staff to kind of then build, you know, recommendations to bring forth to the Planning Commission and city council by June 2025. So three out of four of our staff recommendations here are in relation to the HRC contract. And then the other one is just kind of about, you know, this path towards tenant protections, as well as like these community workshops. We are open for questions, comments. Thank you.
City Council. Questions? Mr. Alter, you might have to... My hearing system's not working, apparently.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, staff, again, for this report. A couple of questions to start with is, I see that when it comes to tenant protections, there's actually several different line items that would clarify what tenant protections are. And everything from rent control or stabilization, best cause evictions, relocation assistance, and then buyout agreements and so forth. You highlighted one in particular, rental registry. Is there a reason why that one's highlighted in the other ten items or not?
I don't believe there was a specific reason that it was highlighted in terms of the formatting, but that's certainly, you know, one of the items that we've looked at as part of the program. But based on the Subcommittee's recommendations thus far, we're not directly moving forward with that item. We'll seek to receive input from the community during community engagement related to that and many other topics.
And then see from there. So we are going to go out, as we discussed earlier tonight, going out first, speak to all stakeholders and gather input and see where there's a will and where there's an interest to move forward. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then when it comes to the registry, you have a more specific question, just for, as an example, is, you know, things change over time constantly, and it changes and it's inevitable. Things like being in business, I know that there was a point in time that to build a pool as a contractor is one permit, and then it went to five, and now it's back down to three permits to build a pool. To run my business, at one time, it was one permit, and then it went to five, and it's down to four permits now to simply run one business. Okay, four licenses, I mean. Same thing with owning property. When you own property that you ran out for 15 of the years that I've been fortunate enough to have a rental property, I had to have a separate business license. And what determined the fee of that business license was based upon income. So what difference would a rental registry have versus somebody paying a fee to use that property as a rental that has reported the income generated from that property?
So generally, how a rental registry would work is that landlords would pay a fee per unit. And so it would allow a landlord that has one unit to pay that singular fee, and a landlord that has, you know, a large number of units to pay multiples of that. And that would be on an, typically, if they're on an annual basis. And what that does is it requires landlords to actually register, not just to receive a license to operate within the city, but it specifically would require some specific information about the unit that's being renting. So what is the unit, who's renting it, and how much are they paying? And are there any additional fees as an example of things that it would require? So you're able to collect additional data that effectively would allow us to do a vast majority of enforcement based on state law. For example, state law does have the allowable rent increase. If someone tells us they're rent last year or they're rent this year, then we're able to automatically calculate what that percentage is and implies that unit to help us understand that there's an issue. Additionally, the registration of each unit that's rented in the city would effectively operate as a business license. Today, it's interesting to hear the evolution of permits. And I think we're always trying to reduce the number of pieces of paper that you need, certainly. But ultimately, right now, you don't need a regular business license in the city of Ventura and rent out of permit. So we're also missing out on that registration of people operating businesses within the city because of the nature of that business. And so ultimately, what cities typically do, what our neighbors are doing that have these types of programs, is they utilize the funding from the rent registry in order to fund all of the tenant protection, the rest of the tenant protection programs, and things like a contract with HRC or other legal services.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm looking forward to it anyway, just to make sure there's no redundancy and we're not overburdening people with graphics.
At this point, again, based on a hypothetical registry, we're not proposing any right now. It would only require them to go to one place versus multiple places. So I appreciate that comment, too, that we want to make this simple. Whatever this is, we want to make this simple for people to utilize.
Recognizing the more cost via to rent to people who are providing housing for rent, the more costly the rent will probably be, right?
It's possible. I mean, certainly, you know, we've seen landlords, you know, try to work type those types of fees into rent, but ultimately, they are limited by the allowable rent increases per state law.
I think, I don't want to get too much into the weeds right now because I'm waiting to hear from stakeholders and seeing what's going to happen as we move forward. But I hope that we take into consideration, a lot of the, so much has changed just because of the wildfires and COVID, and seeing insurances disappear and they come back at two, three, four times the cost they had before. And then water rates will be going up, but we still will not triple. And so there's definitely be a lot more costs, and obviously, it'd be fair to everybody. We need to make sure that whatever we consider is truly in the best interest of people who are renting and taking care of their properties in being around at times, and people who are providing the housing. So I'll be looking forward to hearing that conversation. Thank you.
Other questions from the City Council? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. You know, to talk about the registry, right? There was a motion to pass you down, and you voted for this as well, to direct staff to start working on a rental registry. That was about two years ago, right?
I believe so, yes.
And understandably, with everything else that has been going on, you know, that hasn't happened. There, I don't think we've ever even talked about, you and I, or Ms. Rollins and I, or anybody, about what a rental registry might even look like, right?
We halted that conversation when we got a $500,000 response to our RFP, honestly, because it wasn't really feasible to move forward at that time. But that was our first step in actually establishing that was part of the RFP, was to establish a rent registry.
Thank you. And I'll come back to this, and I don't want to get into the weeds, but I do want people to understand. So for example, a rental registry, I will not be here when that happens. It could be something that exempts somebody that is renting out one unit or two units, if we chose, correct?
Absolutely. There's a range of possibilities for a rental registry that helps to reduce impacts to small property owners.
Thank you. And again, what we're talking about here is that's just one of the various things that will be explored. Can we, can we talk about something that is not listed as a potential option that I think would be beneficial? Would that be the time to do this?
I would welcome that.
Thank you. I, what I would, what I would ask, can we do this? Our prior city attorney said we could. He's not here. One of the things that I think we can do, and I'd like some staff feedback on this, and this is not, this isn't going to cost the city money, but it's going to save our residents gobs and gobs of money. When somebody is applying for an apartment, they have to pay an application fee, and that application fee includes a credit check. And I know somebody who spent, you know, over $1,500 on application fees and credit checks and did not get an apartment. So would it be possible to include in this examining whether the city can act as a notary, where somebody gets a credit check, and the city essentially notarizes it that it's good for 90 days, and we require that landlords accept it as part of their application process? I realize it would take some administration on the city's part, but again, when you have some people that are paying $1,000 for essentially the same credit check over and over and over again, is that something we could explore?
Certainly something we could explore. I've never actually looked into something like that, but it's a very interesting idea.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank staff for all the work that they've been doing on this. You know, I have pretty high expectations on this. And I really appreciate Councilmember Alter's questions and concerns about the public engagement.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Mr. McRannells?
Thank you. I have four questions. Go ahead, let me start with the conference. So on slide four, in terms of the cost of Hawkins, AB 1482 and SB 567, I noticed in the HOPE Solutions staff report, there was a rather robust conversation regarding what those. I think it's just generally as a comment in this staff report, I think you should have had that same language brought over. And I think we need to set up a table so that everybody understands the rules that we have to operate with it. And so that's just my comment. On slide five, what is the Planning Commission's role as we get down towards the second?
Sure. So based on the housing element, this is one of the places where the housing element calls for planning commission recommendations on a tenant protection program. So ultimately, we would do community engagement. We would return to the Subcommittee and then ultimately develop, if should the Subcommittee choose to do so, develop additional aspects of the program. And then we would go back to the Planning Commission for their recommendation and then ultimately bring it to council. So they would provide a recommendation as well as the Subcommittee.
And so we would receive two recommendations?
That's correct. For some of these overlapping items, we are going to receive two recommendations, one from the Planning Commission and one from the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee to the City Council, both directed to the City Council.
But potentially, and they could potentially differ.
Yes, they could.
Okay, I'm going to jump ahead to slide nine. So the community, the first thought here is that completely community workshop by November 24, and then you mentioned that we're going to have meetings in October, November. I'm getting concerned about November in terms of you were starting to really move into the holidays. So I would highly like to see that wrapped up by November 15, you know, before we really truly get into the holiday season. To be honest, I'm not thrilled that we're really anywhere past the last week of October, but I mean, I understand the time to do this. But I would be open to considering, you know, pushing out into January just as a, so that we can actually get everybody off.
Our goal would be to finish by November 15th as well. We can even try to push it up a little bit. There, it's two in-person and two online meetings. So we'll do our best to finish by November 15th, if not sooner. And if we can't finish October by then, we'll reconvene in January. And we'll update the council as well with a consent item so that you can see what our schedule is. We'll announce it here as well. We'll do extensive outreach to the community and to the council to let them know when those dates are. So as soon as we have dates, we'll let you know to make sure we fall within that.
Then my last question is slide seven. And I don't actually understand, because there's no discussion about it in the staff report, how did we get here? How is $79,000 the right number? Why isn't it $250,000? Why isn't it $100,000? I mean, could we add more services to this contract? I mean, how do we know that this is, without going through either the community engagement? I mean, I think we need, you know, my understanding is that 567 allows us to start offering the services?
Yeah, I mean, I think you identified a key issue here. We don't know if that's the exact number. We asked the Housing Rights Center how much they think based on their experience with similarly sized cities and similar situations of the types of services, how much it would cost to work with an attorney on their staff to provide those services. And this is the number that they gave us. And so we're going with the number that they, you know, bid to us, but it's billed out hourly. So ultimately, we will utilize that contract until it is up, and we anticipate coming back to you at some point, whether it be in six months or when the full year contract is up, to talk about what we got for that money and then what we would need to either continue the services or extend the contract, depending on the timeframe. But realistically, I anticipate that we'll be back with an amendment to this contract. We just don't know how many exact people out there will utilize the service. And until we open it up for people to use it, we won't know how much it's going to cost us. This has been a challenge of this program, is that providing legal services to the community can be, you know, a small amount, and it can be unlimited depending on the needs of the community. So I think in this first few months, we'll be able to gauge really what the needs are and anticipate out as we move forward with budgeting for next year, so that we can anticipate a little bit better what this will actually cost us.
So is the expectation then that $78,000 will take us to June 30?
The goal is that, well, I think realistically, again, once we see what the needs are of the community, I anticipate us coming back with fortune, just being realistic.
Okay, my last, there's four items that are listed above. In terms of what is covered, is there things that we didn't contract for that we could add based on the new law?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember McRannells. So as of right now, these are the various services that are available to Ventura residents. And then basically, as staff for the Housing Rights Center, you already receive your actual staff attorney, a law fellow, and two additional staff members that are solely working on issues related to the animal tenant concerns for the, for Ventura residents. There are no additional services available as of right now. We're in a similar situation at the city of South Pasadena that also did an expanded contract with the Housing Rights Center. And basically, we're just waiting to see what the actual need is going to be. And if there's additional services that, you know, once the Housing Rights Center started engaging with landowners and tenants, they fills us with additional services, and they offer those additional services at that particular time.
But I think one key thing to note as well is that this is really to help, you know, most of the services that they're going to provide are going to be tenant landlord mediation. And the goal of the Housing Rights Center is really to mediate out any issues. And what we're not providing is an attorney for tenants to go to court with them. And that's, that's kind of the piece, the big piece that's outside of what the Housing Rights Center is providing that some of the communities are considering.
Is that something they provide, or is that?
Yes, so similarly, what Ms. Diamond's referring to is what's called Right to Counsel. And essentially, the Housing Rights Center in Los Angeles County, which they're located, does provide Right to Counsel services to a certain population within LA County. So you provide Right to Services, and essentially, they have like a group of attorneys that are together, it's about five of them as of right now, which basically help file responses to legal containers. They also represent in court. And they basically see from the start of the eviction process through the end of the eviction process. And usually, both those agencies would have legal representation due in favor of legal and behalf of the tenant.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple. So HRC was established in 68, is that about right? Okay, so I'm still working. It works with, what, almost every city in Ventura County?
Yes, as a sole provider of their housing services, the Housing Rights Center provides services to all cities within Ventura County. There is a separate contract with the city of Ventura and the city of Oxford, but all of the other cities are part of the consortium. And they all have one big contract that services all those remaining cities.
And so either ten or four landlords can use the services of HRC?
Yes, that's right, and the services are all free.
Okay, and so tonight, what we want to talk about is, should we expand the services that we're contracting for with HRC and providing services to landlord and tenants? And then the other half of this is for community workshops, where we talk about anything and everything under the sun. Because nobody has, I'm sorry, go ahead and answer the question, right?
Absolutely, that's correct, so that we can narrow down what the rest of the program is like.
Okay, so the... Okay, so there's an alpha down in the hall room that no one really wants to talk about, but I think a lot of people are here about in this, rent control. But we're not here tonight to talk about rent control. We would never talk about an ordinance of rent control without going out to the public multiple times, right? To discover pluses and minuses, and as a lot of speakers said, there's people in the real estate industry that have some information, and there's some nonprofits that want to give us some information, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we are also going to go to, and look at ordinances of other cities and the counties other than the ones that start with an O?
That's correct, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, but I think you covered what I was going to ask. Thank you.
Asked twice today that we've covered each other really well, so.
I got your six, Mayor, you got mine.
Time for us to leave. Okay, anybody else? Pardon me?
I guess we'll never know.
So, public speakers, how many do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. We have received email communications, which have been posted online, and we have early listed thirty-seven speakers.
Okay, so I would like the city council to entertain the idea of limiting to two minutes, but I'll need a motion for that. Correct.
I'll second.
Discussion?
As Mayor, if I may, you know, I will never support this kind of motion. If there was a hundred speakers, I'd be willing to stay here, even though I expect most of them. I may not agree with, I really want to hear what everybody has to say. And if we do pass this, I apologize to anybody who prepared three minutes of speaking because according to our protocols, we say if you anticipate it more than three minutes, we suggest you put it in line. And so, I'm sorry if this passes, thank you, Mayor.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. I also think that on a formal item, we shouldn't be reducing time for people. It's one thing in public comments that aren't related to the agenda, but I don't believe our protocols allow us to change the time on formal items.
Mr. City Attorney, are we allowed to move the time down from three minutes to two minutes?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Councilmember Campos has correct that the default rule for an agenda item is three minutes per speaker. However, the city council will actively vote to waive the rule by a majority vote if the city council member is present, when it is deemed there is good cause to do so based on the particular facts and circumstances involved. So with the motion for, if it is approved by a majority, then the council can reduce the time to two minutes per speaker.
Okay. Other questions or comments? I'm going to read the motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to reduce speaking time to two minutes on this item.
Okay.
You can now adjourn. We all votes have been entered. Five eyes, the motion carries.
Okay, let's start with the public comments, please. Two minutes.
Our first speaker is Gina Hoosh, followed by Pat Hamley.
Good evening. I'm a local small business owner as well as a real estate agent who serves many first-time home buyers to use the home they purchase as the beginning of a financial foundation. While I'm personally a tenant in the home I live in, I also own a home in Ventura that I rented to my tenants as a long-term rental. My husband and I were able to purchase this home to be a rental to create our own financial foundation. We're currently renting at market rate but losing on average two-hundred dollars a month while renting due to the many increasing costs that have to do with homeownership. We're happy to continue operating at a small loss because we know that over time, the equity in our investment will increase and solidify our financial stability. I am a great example of many homeowners in this community and know that myself and many others cannot afford to support the work plan as it's currently being presented. We are not dramatically hiking our rental prices or evicting our tenants and are definitely not profiting wildly off of this investment. I hope that the council will consider speaking more with the CCR and the surrounding communities so we can continue to be, so we can come to a resolution that better speaks to the ability of the small housing provider like myself and the clients I work with who are just trying to create a stable financial future for their families. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pat Hamley, followed by David Caishen.
Hi, thank you very much for your time this evening. I'm Pat Hamley, I'm a real estate broker here in Ventura. And I have a mother of three adult college graduate students who very much struggle with affordable housing here. And I really want to make a difference, I know all of you do, and based on our discussion, it sounds like the city is willing to listen to different stakeholders, really try to be creative, and I hope that we all can think big, not small, in finding pragmatic housing solutions that will build trust and solve very complex housing problems here in Ventura. I think we can do it if we all work together.
Our next speaker is David Caishen, followed by Philip Fields.
David Caishen, Apartment Associations of Greater Los Angeles, representing ten thousand rental housing providers throughout Ventura, Los Angeles, and San Bernardino counties. The city of Ventura should focus on helping renters by creating direct rental vouchers for low-income renters suffering from sudden job loss, illness, or injury using the twenty-thousand dollars currently allocated for the unnecessary expansion into legal representation by HRC. Rent stabilization is extremely costly and harmful policy that is universally disfavored by economists as evidenced by the recent global detailed analysis of a hundred and twelve studies by Konstantin Holadin published in the Journal of Housing Economics. It causes substantial decrease in existing affordable rental housing as mom-and-pop owners are driven out of business, discourages new housing development, and creates higher rents for the few remaining controlled units, as well as huge increases for all non-controlled units. A rental registry's fundamental purpose is to enforce rent stabilization. Without it, there is no justification to establish such an extremely costly program due to technology and staffing needs. Oxnard's recent analysis puts the cost at over two million dollars. Pasadena's new program has nearly five million with seventeen full-time staff. Free legal service is available to renters directly from HUD for fair housing issues and state attorney general's office is investigating and prosecuting cases regarding violation of state law eighty-fourty through and SB five sixty-seven. We encourage the continuation of HRC's existence, existing role for mediation and education, including information on existing legal resources. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Fields, followed by David Estrada.
McNabb, Miles, three of you, and the city attorney must recuse yourselves because you haven't hired an independent external investigator, laughing as in the Johnson case. You have a contract of interest, Miles, of investigating, representing the victims and representing the accusers of saying that this is rent control by relaxing, putting the lives of the city employees only because they are black. And this is a pattern of retaliation, collusion, a machine that quiets everyone based on what you guys do. You know, and then you lost to the teacher ethics, you're breaking those ethics, Miles, same way as Hitler brought those ethics. You're incompetent and you're violating the brown art by not having hired an outside to investigate why they posted these paradigms lies about the employees being out of order, pushing rent control, et cetera, et cetera, fabrications that are untrue. And you, standing man, especially you, have, in November, two months from now, you will be facing the anger of bodies. You will have to answer your bodies because you are being insensitive, heartless with people that work hard, city employees that work hard, officers that work hard, when you have no respect to the working people, you have no trust in the community, your master is selling of the kids himself now.
Thank you, Mr. Fields, and who's your champion? Our next speaker is David Estrada, followed by Sonia Flores.
Good evening. So to address the housing situation in Ventura County, the housing crisis in Ventura County is a symptom of a system that prioritizes profit over people. The reality is stark. Renters are being crushed under the weight of a capitalist system that has turned housing into a commodity rather than recognizing it as a basic human right. The average rent in Ventura County has soared to over two, twenty-five hundred dollars per month, meaning that a worker would need to earn above forty-nine dollars per hour, over three times the state minimum wage, just to qualify to keep a roof over their head. The crisis is, isn't it a coincidence? It's the direct result of a housing market driven by greed. Twenty of, almost twenty-four thousand low-income rented households in Ventura County are denied access to affordable housing, pushed out by developers and landlords who seek our homes, who see our homes as mere investments. Meanwhile, the state and federal funding for our housing has plummeted by eighty percent, abandoning most, the most vulnerable among us to fend for themselves in an increasingly hostile environment. Seventy-two percent of extremely low-income households are now forced to spend more than half of their income on rent, while the wealthiest remain insulated from these harsh realities. And with only, we must reject this system that prioritizes profit over people. The solution lies in collective action and the fight for a society where housing is not a privilege for the rich but a guaranteed right for all. I'm representing Ventura Tenants Union, join in the struggle for housing justice. Our fight is part of a larger battle against a system that dehumanizes and exploits us. It's time to reclaim our right. Yeah. Big goodie.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sonia Flores, followed by Logan Clark.
Hello, my name is Sonia Flores, I'm a resident of the city of Ventura and a member of Homes For All. We're asking the city of Ventura to do the following. Number one, to strengthen legal enforcement. We recommend that the city allocate more resources to the city attorney's office, specifically by hiring an in-house attorney specializing in enforcing state laws. And we also ask, number two, that the city expand the HRC contract to create a right-to-council program in Ventura. These services need to be included in the HRC contract, and the amount of the contract needs to be increased to accommodate this change in the scope of work. This would allow the HRC to hire a housing attorney and to have a physical location set up within the city of Ventura. The time for this is now. The city council's kicked the tenant protections can down the road for several years now. Residents of Ventura are being evicted literally as we speak for being unable to pay illegal exorbitant rent increases. Low-income families, seniors, and Spanish-speaking families are being targeted for these evictions because they're viewed as being vulnerable and defenseless by the larger property management companies. I myself was asked to move from my previous residence, an apartment complex named One Home's Apartments at the age of two thousand nineteen, as a part of temporary relocation that was connected to a construction rehab project that started in two thousand twenty. We had an agreement in place that I would be able to return to my unit with understanding that it would be increased by three hundred to four hundred dollars per month. Instead, I would notify that the increase in rent would be from one thousand four hundred and fifty per month to three thousand six hundred dollars per month for a one-bedroom apartment. That's a two-thousand-dollar increase in over two years. And that's in my time, but thank you.
Our next speaker is Logan Clark, followed by Judy Alexander. Is there a Logan Clark? Okay, we'll move on to Judy Alexander, followed by Jacqueline Cecilia, who's been seated
Hi, I'm Judy Alexander, chairman of the Ventura Social Service Task Force and a member for Homes For All and Ventura County Coalition for Affordable Housing. I want to thank you, first, for being willing to talk about this topic. It's important. And what is being proposed is woefully inept. It's inadequate because the contract being proposed for HRC will not meet the needs of this community. There must be a means of enforcing existing law. There must be a means for tenants to have a place to go. I sit on the board of the Homeless Prevention Fund. Any emergency is causing people not to be able to have a place to live. They are paying over forty-nine percent of their income for rent. That's a different issue. But what we can do is where things aren't being done legally, we need to enforce the law. Secondly, the federal government just passed a Tenants Rights Bill. I wonder how we're going to coordinate, not just locally, but with now national law. There are a lot of questions. I heard earlier a number of people saying they haven't had a chance to speak. What is true is none of us have yet, because there hasn't been a time for engagement, and that is planned, and for that I am grateful, and all of us will be involved. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Jacqueline Cecilia, who's been seated at times, you'll have four minutes, followed by Deborah Schreiber.
I was wondering about that four minutes. Thank you. I have to start off by saying thank you so much. I feel like everyone here tonight is more well-informed than three months, six months ago, and I am really thoroughly impressed. I actually learned some things tonight that I had not known. Thank you so much, Rachel and Leona, and thank you so much to the Housing Rights Department in our city for the work you're putting into this. I don't think that the people here tonight who have said they've not been invited to the table understand that there is a table. And sometimes you have to push your way to the table, and that's what we did at Via Ventura. And that's what we're continuing to do, even though I am no longer a resident because I've been legally evicted because I chose not to pay my rent after I was assaulted and lost almost three months' worth of work because I was assaulted by a property manager for handing out informational flyers about how residents' rights were being violated at Via Ventura. We have another resident here tonight as well who was illegally evicted. She tried paying her rent over and over, and they would not accept it. We have another resident here tonight who, we have several who are deadly, and they do not have any new leases, they have not been presented new leases. If they're being told that they have to pay month-to-month convenience fees, which are illegal, many residents are still paying illegal parking fees or still trying to determine if parking is even legal at Via Ventura apartment complex owned and managed by the region property management. Our former city attorney was going to provide us a city contract that showed whether or not residents could even be charged for parking. However, we are still waiting to just say a year later, and again, many of us are no longer residents, but we're here because we care about the residents. We no longer have a stakeholder, okay? So we keep talking about the stakeholders, council and voter, we don't have, we're not stakeholders, but we care. We're here because we care and we know that there is an issue. And the issue is, and we're forgetting this tonight, it's not about so many of these other issues, it's about enforcing the current laws.
That's all.
That's all we're asking for. We're asking for the enforcement of SB 567 and AD 1482. We're not asking for rental caps. We're not asking for anything to be imposed. We're asking for what has already been imposed to now be enforced. That's why we're asking for the right to counsel. As Judy Alexander said, we are not asking for enough money. We need so much more money to be able to properly serve the tenants of Ventura because there are so many tenants who are suffering from illegal rent increases, illegal fees, and illegal activities by the property management. And just by Fusion and three properties, with if you combine who Fusion owns just in Ventura, there's over three properties. We're talking hundreds of residents whose rights have been violated. And by expanding the contract to the HRC and providing the right to counsel, it doesn't affect the realtors. It doesn't affect all these other stakeholders. It directly affects the tenants who do not have a right to counsel right now. Our private attorney, Sabrina Vexis, specifically told us that our case was not worth enough monetary value. There were too many different aspects, and that each value was not worth enough, and that we would need, hopefully, our city attorney's office to take our case. Our city attorney's office cannot take our case because they're understaffed and there's not enough money that has been given to our city attorney's office to hire additional staff, specifically another attorney. That's what this city needs, like Ojai, the Ochsner, and our other surrounding cities, Santa Barbara. We need the right to counsel. We need a city attorney's office that would take tenants like Via Ventura whose rights have been violated. And that's what we're asking for tonight, is the enforcement of the laws. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Schreiber, followed by Ariel Sanchez.
I'm Deborah Schreiber. That's a hard act to follow. I second everything she just said. Um, I'm the Ventura Social Service Task Force and a Homes For All. I want to make sure everyone read, the council people read the letter that was given to you by Homes For All. I do support the staff recommendation, but it does not go far enough. Uh, we need to expand the contract of the Housing Rights Center for the right to counsel, as has been mentioned. Also, the eviction protections, um, to limit the grounds for eviction and restrict landlords to only one rent increase in any 12-month period. I too happen to own a couple of houses that I rent out. I do not see any of this having an impact on what I do with the homes I rent out. Um, and this is getting what's fair for people. The housing rights contract would help both landlords and tenants to, to get further information. I'm sure they will give information in Spanish, we assume that. And it would be advice and counsel for tenants to help guide them to understand what is allowable and reasonable and legal and what is not. And hopefully, right to counsel would help them to see if things were not being done that were legal. I would like to call for the, um, special attorney for the city that would be directed directly on only working on enforcing state housing laws. I understand the financial limits. And just believe with you to do what you can. This has been a real major issue that has come up as a big priority on this list of priorities for the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ariel Sanchez, followed by Kiana Felix.
Hello, Councilwoman, I'm Ariel Sanchez. I'm a student at Ventura High School, and I'm here to talk about protections with Ventura, technical protections with Ventura Labs. As teenagers, we already have a plethora of things to worry about. Particularly extracurricular sports and studying, and sort of tied to family affairs. No young teenagers ever prepared to face situations like evictions or housing insecurity. This has become a factor that negatively affects my classmates at Ventura High School. Worrying about a place to sleep shouldn't be a thing we teens face, but the reality is that our families can no longer afford to live here in Ventura. More and more often, families are being forced out by high rent prices and are facing unjust evictions with no policy that provides a right to counsel. This issue also affects my teachers and school staff that are not able to work and live in the City of Ventura. These challenges are not only going to get worse if we don't enact stronger tenant protections now. I'm here to urge all of you to take our concerns seriously and strengthen our, our local housing laws, provide the right to counsel for people who are facing evictions, and overall stronger tenant protections. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kiana Felix, followed by Raymond Perez.
Hello, my name is Kiana Felix, and I'm a local resident of Ventura. My father, who is a hard-working man that works in Ventura, struggled to maintain his apartment unit at Via Ventura, the place he chose to live at to remain close to my sister and I. During his time there, he faced many fee charges that inflated the price of his apartment. Being faced with these skyrocketing prices, he was not able to afford the apartment, which caused him to move to Oxnard where the rent is a bit more affordable and finds himself covered by their tenant protections. Unfortunately for my sister and I, it has made it more difficult coordinating staying with him due to the fact that he is now townover rather than staying nearby and keeping our family together. Many Ventura families often face this reality. It is getting harder and harder for families to call Ventura home when they struggle to keep their house. It is a shock to see that neighboring cities like Oxnard, Santa Barbara, and Ojai all have housing policies that keep their residents' houses for reasonable rates and provides adequate protections in case of unjust evictions. It is unfortunate that our main city of the county, Ventura, has little to no tenant protections that keep our families living locally and not having them face housing insecurity. I'm here to urge you to keep families here and not have them abandon their city due to the high increases of rent and lack of renters' rights, legal representation, local housing enforcement. And strengthening our housing laws is a necessity to keep families together here in Ventura. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Raymond Perez, followed by Anelica Lopez.
Good evening to you all. My name is Raymond Perez. I'm a local Westside resident in Ventura. I'm here to urge you to provide strong tenant protections here in the city. I've lived here with my parents my whole, I've lived here in Ventura with my parents my whole life. And one thing that I've seen get increasingly challenging for my family is the skyrocketing, skyrocketing rent costs for apartments that are not reflecting the outrageous rates we live in. We lived in a senior apartments on that avenue where the landlord did not care for his residents the way he should have been, constantly being infested with mice, roaches, and ants. My family and I did not feel comfortable or safe living alone. But what other choices would we present with? I'm really big on being grateful for what I have because I know I am more fortunate than others. But there is a struggle between being grateful for what you are doing and letting people walk all the way because they know that is your only option. Living here through a point, point C, really helped my eyes when I couldn't care for the tenants in the building. We kept on insisting that they do something about their problems, but nobody cared in each hour. The only response we received is that they were increasing the rent once again. And it gets to a point where the rent gets so high, even families that are working two jobs can't keep up with it. They pay check to paycheck, constantly stressing about living in a place with a huge budget problems. I'm proud to say I have known that this affected my school or sports, but the same cannot be said about other teens who face similar challenges. There's no secret that school attendance rates have dipped dramatically, and housing insecurity is a major factor. Families are being forced to relocate and move on from our city or even the homeless, which negatively impacts our education. That's why I'm speaking here tonight. The strongly encouraged the city council to reserve the rest of its staff focusing on meaningful tenant protection work plans. We need more lieutenant education to survive this housing crisis. We need legal representation, and we need local enforcement to fight housing violations happening in our community. And we need the strength in our current housing laws to keep local families happy and honest. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anelica Lopez, followed by Christian Dunas.
Hi, good evening, city council members. My name is Anelica Lopez, local resident of the Westside and the mother of Rain, who you just heard from. Um, we're both here to stress the importance of having strong tenant protections along with strong enforcement. I have lived in Ventura for 45 years, having to deal with the ongoing increase in rent, putting a stress on the entire family. Having to live at those studio apartments where the landlord was more of a slumber who did not care for the units or the people living in them. Uh, moving in, rent was $1,750. Uh, the rate increased the very first year I was there to $1,950, and then two years later, the new owners increased it to $2,150, without ever fixing any problems the apartments had. Were a key regular maintenance, were never up to local city standards, yet the rent seemed to increase without proper justification. Because Ventura has no strong tenant protection, several renters are having to face these types of conditions with no one to turn to for help. Eventually, the rent became too much for me to afford, which caused me to face housing insecurity because of possible eviction for not only, for not being able to afford my rent. What made this situation even more difficult was for me to take care of my children to provide a stable living situation. After leaving the housing, waiting for 30 years, I was finally contacted and received the government-assisted unit. But that's not to say the same for the hundreds of renters here in the city. Many of them share heartbreaking stories of living in cars and on the streets. Not only them, but the children are the ones that are most affected. But the housing insecurity caused a dip in their education, making them susceptible to street gangs in the area. If you want to keep safe, that the only remedy is this crisis is to know your right workshops, then you're really out of touch with the community, and we're here to provide you with that wake-up call. We're strongly pushing for more meaningful tenant protection here in the city and that rival our local neighboring cities like Oxnard and Ojai. We cannot be the only city in the county where it neglects its citizens from making Ventura livable. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christian Dunas, followed by Carva. Christian, you've been seated at time. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Church of the Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Staff. My name is Christian Dunas. I'm a policy advocate of cause, central coastal alignment for the stable economy, and a member of Homes For All, and a resident here in the Westside of Ventura. I'm here along with Ventura students, parents, renters, and homeowners in affordable housing advocates to urge the city council to take a deeper look and work towards creating a more comprehensive outline of the current tenant protection work plan being presented today. I see this in an effort to bridge the need for strong meaningful tenant protections to keep our most vulnerable renters housed and safe throughout the City of Ventura. State law of AD 1482 cannot be the only tool to protect tenant tenants when their housing rights continue to be violated. And since April 2024, SB 567, which is now to effect, grants our local municipalities the ability to enforce statewide tenant protections. But even then, we've seen the difficulty and challenges to the city attorney's office and attorney general when presented with the tenant grievances. And since then, we've seen tenants that have continued to be evicted, continue to experience awful rent increases or other violations, and all without the ability for our city to act as legal defense with clear laws in broken. We need legal enforcement in our city. With SB 567 in place, there's an opportunity for the city to invest in housing attorneys who have the expertise, have the capacity to handle legal housing cases and grievances that many tenants in our city cannot handle of their own. And this is because, without representation, tenants do experience an eviction either way. Our recommendation is to make enforcement and legal aid available to tenants today by expanding funding towards the Housing Rights Center within the contract, which the report indicates that there's a budget around $80,000 to expand the current contract in the city. And although this is a step in the right direction, and I do appreciate the need of priority to extend education outreach to these new services and more, it still clearly doesn't provide adequate support to keep people housed when facing serious legal issues that could impact their current status. And as an example, in 2022, the City of Santa Barbara created a housing trust fund and allocated a quarter of a million towards the ride to castle program. And I believe that implementing initiatives like Santa Barbara and LA County and allocating funds towards legal services like those consistently helps tenants go through hardships. This could also lead to case work for the City of Ventura that there's an organization like the HRC that has capacity to take on these cases. And so lastly, we believe Christian needs a statewide effort to make sure our council makes informed decisions regarding tenant protections for Ventura. We have local cities in the county who have passed a local order system about the housing crisis. So why not here? Why not Ventura? Why not for our tenants? Why not implement the law and create a registry in an effort to help determine the number of tenants being impacted, which in turn could give better direction and types of protections Ventura needs. Ventura is not immune to the housing crisis. And the longer we wait, the worse our part of working tenants will be long-term. This work plan is only scratching the surface of what protections are needed here in Ventura. And by taking these steps, the city can lead the way in creating a community where all residents, especially renters, feel secure and protected. Today, the housing landscape in Ventura is increasingly challenging. And with many residents facing rate and rent, rising rents, insecure deficits, and the looming threat of displacement, you know, if you all remember the results of the city survey on navigating homelessness, over 50% of community members who took that survey want the city to do more on tenant protections. Because for them, it's their life at stake, not their business profits. And as a reminder, the tenant protection program has been on the city's do list through the Housing Amendment. And this conversation started years ago. If there's anything anyone should be surprised about tonight is how long this process has been delayed. So it is critical for our city to address these issues head-on and ensure the well-being and stability of our residents. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Carva, followed by Jasmine Cameron.
Hey y'all. I'm Carva, I'm a District 6 resident. Um, unlike homeowners, renters don't get the privilege of a higher fixed-rate mortgage. Their housing costs can fluctuate dramatically, often with little warning, leaving them vulnerable to sudden rent hikes and displacement. Um, this isn't just a local issue, though, and I think we can and should learn from global examples, not just regional ones. I'm a proud Austrian-American, and, um, most of my family lives in Vienna, which is a global example of what this can look like when done well. Um, most of my family and 60% of Vienna residents, uh, live in public housing. Vienna's robust public housing system has not only provided affordable and stable homes for its residents, but it also contributes to social cohesion and economic stability, proximity to family. The success of Vienna's model lies in its recognition that housing is a fundamental right, not a privilege. The city's commitment to social housing didn't happen by chance. It was the result of deliberate sustained effort to ensure that everyone, regardless of income, had access to safe and affordable housing. Imagine what we could achieve in Ventura if we approached tenant protections with the same level of commitment and urgency. Um, when it comes to engagement, I want to remind everyone in the room and council that 46% of Ventura residents are renters. That's nearly half of the entire city. It's, it's 50-some thousand people. Um, yet, when it comes to engaging and shaping the future of our city through policy conversations and things like the General Plan Advisory Committee, only 22% of G-PAC survey recipients were renters. Um, so, McReynolds, I'm really glad you kind of highlighted the November scheduling of these engagement opportunities, but I want everyone to do as much as they can to make sure that renters are at the table and are part of this conversation. Um, and I definitely look forward to joining us. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Jasmine Cameron, followed by Claudia Armin.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Hasmeen, and I'm a resident of Oxnard. I'm here as a concerned citizen and believer that housing is a human right. I'm requesting that the council include the tenant protections work plan in all other bullets listed under item 13. I have some economic privilege, and I've never experienced the fear of possibly losing my home. I have howled the witness to impact on students and families when there is lack of tenant protection. I have the honor of working within the K-12 education nonprofit space both in Los Angeles, California, and East Harlem, New York. In both cities, I witnessed luxury developers and real estate agents be active participants in gentrifying historically Asian, Black, and Latinx communities, pushing families out and unhousing our children and students, children who are our most vulnerable population. According to data from the National Center for Homeless Education during the 2021-2022 school year, nearly 1.2 million children were either homeless, living in a shelter or an unsheltered location such as a car or a tent, or sharing housing with friends or family beyond a union's designated capacity. We should be placing humans before real estate sales, business, and profit. These are human lives. The most important stakeholders here are the people who are most impacted by the housing crisis and who are at most risk of losing their home, not those whose ultimate goal is to make money and secure power over the housing market. Housing is a human right, and I hope you prioritize tenant rights and not individuals concerned with profit while children continue to be unhoused. Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is Claudia Armin, followed by Matt Mello.
Good evening, I'm Claudia Armin, Ventura resident and member of Homes For All. Thank you for starting work on renter protections, as stipulated in the housing element. I am very supportive of the work plan, and I will certainly commit to participating. I have several renter friends who are fortunate to have terrific landlords who follow the law and are transparent and honest. who follow the law and are transparent and honest. Landlords who operate ethically have nothing to fear from a nonprofit organization providing legal services to Ventura's renters. But we also know that there are dishonest landlords. In this chamber, over the years, you have heard many renters talk about the abuses that they have faced. Via Ventura, they'd be one of the most egregious examples, but certainly not an isolated incident. My concern about the contract for legal services is that it falls short of what's needed. The proposal includes a range of education, counseling, mediation. But actual legal representation of renters is not included. The total contract is eighty thousand. This is inadequate. Last month, Santa Barbara approved a $250,000 contract with the Legal Aid Foundation there that includes provision of legal advice or representation to a minimum of eighty households at risk of eviction. This goes beyond counseling mediation. The contract allows the Legal Aid Foundation to hire a full-time attorney and a part-time legal assistant. In issue after issue, when it comes to affordable housing and tenant protections, Ventura is behind our neighboring jurisdictions. Why? It's a lack of political will, and it's sad, and Ventura renters deserve better. When something is important to you all as councilmembers, you find the money to act. I hope that renters in our community are indeed important and that you act accordingly. And I just want to ask the staff, will this contract help feed Ventura in this context?
Our next speaker is Matt Bello, followed by Caroline Avoyo. Uh, Matt Bello. We'll move on to Caroline Avoyo. Jerry Becker. Followed by Luis Lambarra.
Hello. I got my notes, I wasn't set. I guess I should just start by saying thank you. I know it's a tough job. It's a tough job for everybody. It's a tough job for me, too. I am a resident of one of the O cities. I'm a resident of Ojai. And I pay a business tax here, a license fee. And I do work in Ventura, and I love Ventura. I am here mainly to present a different opinion that has been expressed over and over again. And I do see some common needs from all sides of this, and that's legal representation. It sounds like we don't know what's going on out there. I know there's landlords that don't know how to operate under the current state laws. I know there's tenants that don't know how to operate under the current state laws. So I think in both directions, that could be a resource. We're talking about an issue of the housing crisis. And basically, the root cause of our housing crisis is increased demand for housing. I mean, we have increased demand for housing supply. And experts are saying not to put additional pressure and restrictions on the market to fix it. That's the bottom line. It's an expensive endeavor to be a landlord, property owner. And we have been facing many, many extra pressures economically, higher insurance, we all know about that, higher taxes, higher maintenance costs, added restrictions from our local jurisdictions. And, you know, just trying to get through all of the hoops and bounds, and it's very tough. So I would encourage you to all look at both sides of this. Look at both sides and support the housing providers out there. You don't need to, like, continue. Thank you.
Luis Lambarra, followed by Adela Trager.
Good evening. I'm Luis Lambarra, Ventura County Cola. There are many people here tonight to speak on the content and impacts of the site. So I'd like to use my two minutes to ask the council to consider a much needed process improvement associated with this and other items tonight. As you consider this matter, it's critical to note that statements in multiple staff reports have created serious misunderstandings. The reports suggest that the subcommittee approved a tenant protection plan, when it's been clarified now, tonight, that no such plan actually exists at this time. Decisions must be made based on accurate and complete information. When the decision-making process is compromised, even if by mistake, the foundation of our publicary process is put at risk. The public relies on the transparency of this process to trust their elected reps are making decisions based on facts, not misunderstandings. Transparency is not a buzzword. It's the cornerstone of effective governance. When there is disagreement and confusion with not one, but two staff reports at the same hearing, especially when these reports conflict with the video recording of the subcommittee meeting itself, the city has failed to uphold its duty to the public. And the trust that the public places in this body has been eroded. Public trust is fragile and very difficult to rebuild. So I propose a process improvement, moving forward not just at the City Council, but at all subcommittee. Not just the council, but subcommittee members, staff, and the public must understand and agree on what exactly and specifically has been voted on. I recommend that immediately prior to any vote at any city public meeting, council or committee, the clerk who appointed the scribe must read the motion in full and post the motion in full in writing on the public screen. This simple process amendment not only increases transparency, it will avoid future confusion. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Adela Trager, followed by Julio Gomez.
Good evening. Hello again. Yes, real estate agent, yes, property owner, home provider, but first and foremost, a community member of this beautiful Ventura. I really appreciate hearing all the speakers tonight because you do start to hear some things that are sounding like enforcement. A lot of things that are mutual, education, education, education on both sides. I'll tell you a little bit about what I hear in the field as a real estate agent. Anyone who thinks this housing situation is simple is very misguided. This is across the state, our housing issues. My question, and sometimes when I hear, you know, some of the responses is, but why does it fall on my shoulders or on the shoulders of the home provider? I get that housing should be for everyone, but it isn't entirely the housing provider's, you know, issue. It is all of our issues. We have issues at the city that we can talk about that perhaps can, you know, fix some things. So housing, yes, but not necessarily just on the backs of one party. We definitely have some enforcement issues. What I'm hearing in the field are people that are unaware and that they're afraid, property owners, that they're just going to sell because they're frustrated, because they don't know. And yes, it is an investment. It's their retirement. And so they're afraid. And so they just assume sell because they don't understand, and they're afraid. And also, people who are looking for housing, who are struggling, who have been in their rental for a long time, but because their property owner is uncertain and afraid, they're going to sell. And so now they have to leave and find new housing. So I deal with all of them. We're right in the middle of it. And so I do look forward to those conversations. I do see a lot of, you know, collaboration between the groups once we understand each other. Well, thank you.
Our next speaker is Julio Gomez, followed by Brian Zell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Julio Gomez, broker-owner of property management in Oxnard. We take control of properties here, and the owner just matters on that. It's the retirement matter. We don't need more fees. We don't need more registration fees because we know the collateral effect, it will pass on to the consumer. As I hardly went down, everybody's complaining about the rents. They're pretty high. You add another layer into this expensive housing, what's going to happen? The people we want to protect is the people that are going to be more affected. So let's go think, let's go invite everybody to the table to find a solution for our community. I live here for more than twenty-six years. I don't want to see my kids go away because they look like they can't afford it. All my kids, they want to stay in Oxnard, Ventura, but they think they asked me that. I can't afford a $20,000. I can't afford a $2,500. So what are we going to do? Let's go put our minds together. Let's go help our community. This is a great community to live here. But we don't need more fees. The AB fourteen, AB two, SB five, six, seven has enough. Let's go apply the laws. We don't need more laws. We don't need more fees. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Zell, followed by Matt Caputo.
Good evening. My name is Brian Zell, and I'm a resident of Ventura. I moved back here about nine years ago towards the end of 2015. I'm also a tenant and a all-star real estate agent. So I understand the anxieties involved in being a tenant and what can happen to you. In 2017, I was displaced by the Thomas fire. And I was one of the lucky ones to find someplace to live fairly soon, within a few weeks. And it was rental in town. And for the first three and a half years living in that house, I took care of it like it was our own, paid rent all the time. And then the owners ended up increasing the rents. And then the owners, the property manager, got word that tenant protection acts coming in Oxnard. And they started fixing the rents legally, extending what they could. But every single year, my rents would increase and increase and increase for three years in a row. And when I asked the property manager why, it was because of the anxiety of the property owner realizing that if they keep up with the rents, they wouldn't be able to, with a choice to sell it or anything else, be able to sell at market value. So Mr. Holter talked about unintended consequences. These tenant protection acts will have unintended consequences. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Caputo, followed by Candy Pinzak.
Good evening. Once again, I'm also. I don't, I don't want to forget about the small-time housing providers like me. I've worked my tail off here without an education to, without a formalized education to have, to build a business, to have a rental, to own my own. And I'm not ashamed of that. I'm not. And there are hundreds and hundreds of homeowners, landlords, housing providers, just like you. And if you leave folks like me out of the conversation, I think you make a mistake. I would be very disappointed. I would be one of the first to sell and get out of the business. And I've already had some of my owners saying to me, should we sell them? That would be a shame to leave that, leave those owners out of this process. As far as the Housing Rights Center is concerned, where are the stats? Who spent seventy-three thousand dollars? I don't really understand. The county has stats. Somebody has to have stats. Nobody can spend seventy-three thousand without knowing where they're spending the money. You know, Santa Barbara has a robust rental housing mediation program. That's not even on this list. I think it's a shame. It works. It's functional. It's an alternative. And as far as application of these are concerned, I have some great ideas that, yeah, that we should share. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Candy Pinzak, followed by Jorge Deleon.
Hi again, Candy Pinzak, V C C A R, 2024 president. We work daily to address housing challenges, and we believe that the proposed tenant protection work plan will not solve these issues, but instead exacerbate them. Economists from across the political spectrum agree the key to addressing housing crisis is increasing supply, not imposing more market restrictions. Ventura already has strong tenant protection under state laws like AB fourteen, AB two, and S V five, six, seven, which balance the rights of tenants and property owners. And these laws are working. Evictions are coming to their lowest level in twelve years, and the rental market is stabilizing with a healthy vacancy rate. That being said, what I'm hearing is we support additional code enforcement resources and the hiring of a new city attorney with land use and tenant right expertise, as well as rental assistance programs. It is worth noting that V C C A R and other key stakeholders have been repeatedly held up the process. Moreover, staff rather than abuse the conversation, creating the impression that rent stabilization and tenant protection ordinances are foregone conclusions rather than proposals still under consideration. This not only undermines trust, but raises issues of procedural fairness and puts the city in a precarious legal position. We encourage the city to think big, not small, and consider more collaborative approaches like mediation programs that have been successful in nearby cities. If the city adequately enforces the current state laws, a lot of the people telling their stories here this evening would be at home watching TV and eating dinner with their families. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jorge Deleon, followed by Leah Waldman.
Good evening again. My name is Jorge, and I'm a resident of Ventura. I've actually been living in Ventura since birth, with the exception of a couple of years of a teenager. With regards to enforcing these rules, you know, specifically AB five, six, seven, we're here really in support of the enforcement of the current law. Okay, adding additional scenarios that would, you know, make rental housing investment not attractive to new investors is going to actually really lower the amount of rental housing availability in the state, which is going to make the situation even worse. I want to come back and ask them for long-term protections at that time. So my ask today is that when the work group gets together, that we're not biased, that the group is not biased when it comes to really, really engaging in the community. Because based on some comments that were published in the local newspaper on the seventeenth, which is about ten days ago, they make reference to certain ordinances that were actually established in our neighboring cities. They actually quote a percentage. And there's a bit of danger with having a specific percentage that is not driven or that's actually much more restrictive. And I'm going to point out to something that is quoted in the work can under the proposal. And I'm worried that it's going to try and mirror or try to bias the community outreach to really look into those ordinances that would actually make this much more harder for us to enforce. So I'm all for the funding of the programs and the additional enforcement. I have no issue with that. But any, you know, illusion or any, you know, consideration of additional protection plans, you know, rent control issues and so forth. I know that I've been tasked, like, not to use that word here by one of our members here, but the reality is that if we're not careful, we might just go that route. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leah Waldman, followed by Karen Flock.
I'm Leah Waldman. I'm a thirty-three-year resident of Ventura and a homeowner here in the lovely Clearpoint neighborhood. So I'm here representing Ventura County Clue, Clerching Lady United for Economic Justice. We're a network of people from congregations throughout the county who are working against the grave inequalities, economic and racial, in our communities. And we're also a member of Homes For All. Much of what I was going to say has been said by my colleagues from Homes For All. But I do want to underscore that when I saw seventy-nine thousand dollars to support legal services, it just struck me as very strangely inadequate. When we hear that Santa Barbara has put $250,000 into their contract for legal services, we need to keep in mind that Santa Barbara is a city with thirty thousand fewer people than Ventura. I also want to raise the issue of a dedicated attorney because all the, all the, the list I saw of what was going to be provided Because all the, all the, the list I saw of what was going to be provided was mediation at best. But people need legal representation. And it would be best if that was happening in-house in in our city. And I just want to say, as a homeowner, as a secure person, I am still a stakeholder in this issue. I'm deeply concerned about my community and the quality of life here for everyone. It doesn't do me any good, my family any good, when people are living with extreme housing insecurity.
Our next speaker is Karen Flock, followed by Stephanie Caldwell.
Good evening, Mayor Scherrier and members of the city council. My name is Karen Flock. I'm a resident of Ventura. I support this staff recommendation. Almost half of Ventura's are renters. Their, the median income of renters is significantly lower than that of homeowners. They are more likely to be minorities. Over half of renters are cost burdened, meaning that they spend over 30% of their income on housing costs. Many renters are facing significant rent increases and other issues. We need more affordable housing, and some of that is in the works, but it's going to take a while. And it's important to take what action we can now to assist renters. It's important to do in this plan to look at increasing protections, particularly legal representation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Caldwell, followed by Lucas Sucker.
Good evening. I'm still Stephanie Caldwell. I still work in the Ventura Chamber. I'm also a resident of Ventura. The Ventura Chamber of Commerce has been a strong advocate for housing at all levels for many, many years. The number one issue that we hear from our members is that attraction and retention of employees is unduly challenged by the lack of available and affordable housing. Tonight, we've heard a lot of emotional testimony and the real struggles of many of our neighbors. The truth is, we do have a housing crisis, the result of which we are trying to navigate here. You, as the council, did not create this problem or this situation, yet you are tasked with helping to develop solutions. The state laws, AB 1482 and SB 567, as discussed, already protect residents renters. We must also do a better job of educating residents on their rights, but also property owners on these laws. I hope that there will be significant consideration in the discussions on just that issue. I also agree with the hiring of a city attorney specializing in housing issues. I also believe that the expediting of housing development should be strongly considered in this. The housing crisis and lack of available housing is really only going to be solved by an increased demand in supply. We also believe in the very strong enforcement of the current laws. If a property owner is knowingly breaking the law, they should be held accountable. Any one of us could fall on hard times, and there's no shame in that. We need to strengthen the safety net that is available when this happens. Expansion and possibly consolidation of rental assistance programs would certainly be a great place to start. I urge you, as this moves forward, to do so with great clarity, communication, and transparency. As Councilmember Johnson says, the outcome is never better than the process. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lucas Sucker, followed by Nava.
Thank you, councilmembers. Lucas Sucker, co-director of CAUS. How do we get this to talk about the three P's: production, preservation, protection? We need all three. I've served six years on planning commission. Our city has approved nearly every housing development that's come before us and done streamlining. You know, but production is part of the solution. But as Karen Flock and no one in the city knows more about housing than Karen Flock said, those things take years. And tenants at risk of losing their homes need relief right now. Tenants have come to ask for stronger tenant protections, like in some of our neighboring cities like Oxford and Ojai. You know, others landlords say that we just need to implement state laws. So let's, let's have that debate in in October and November. But at the very least, we need to be putting our money where our mouth is and implementing those state laws. The single biggest gap in implementing state law is that here in Ventura County, when tenants are facing a violation, they simply know where to go. There's no agency in charge of this. You can't go to the police. You need a lawyer. 90% of landlords have lawyers, 90% of tenants don't. And in Santa Barbara County, LA County, there are strong legal programs for tenants. Here, when tenants come to CAUS, we have nowhere to refer them to. We can create a rights council program like they have in Santa Barbara for 0.04% of our city budget. I mean, it's budget dust. It sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not. And the beautiful thing about a rights council program is it helps both landlords and tenants. My message to council is to do something. Whether we're going to pass our stronger protections or we're going to implement what already exists on the state books, we can't afford to do nothing. There are too many people who grew up in the city who have had to move away. There are too many families who can't afford to raise their kids here that have schools they're losing enrollment. And there are too many people every day losing their homes and ending up on our streets. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nava, followed by Kaido Karu Karasim.
Can you hear me? I'm just a worker, construction worker. And I've seen many dilapidated rental properties. Have you ever heard of the real page? Have you ever heard of the real page? You're a gang of landlords that are raising all your rent. They're being investigated by the DOJ. Have you ever heard of the real page? Have you ever heard of the real page? Have you ever heard of the real page? They're in violation of the REICO Act. Have you ever heard of the real page? They're being investigated by the DOJ.
Our next speaker, followed by Karen Hopper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I brought no instruments, and I apologize. My name is Tyler. I'm here tonight speaking as a resident of District Two and as a renter. I support the expansion of the HRC contract, though if we want it to be a meaningful policy for homeless prevention, then I think it needs to be much stronger and include some form of rate to council. Many others have already given a bit of testimony about the necessity of this. Just please keep their testimony in mind as you deliver it tonight. Law-abiding landlords should not be scared by tenants who are protected. It's not a zero-sum relationship. Rights for tenants does not mean less rights for landlords. So please consider expanding the HRC contract tonight. On the second, second part of the action that you're considering tonight, the work plan, I support council getting started on dealing, on drafting tenant protection ordinance. No less than three council-adapted plans have already directed council and staff to address these concerns. The housing element, the homelessness plan, and the 2024 housing council rules. For those of us whose futures to live in the city feel dependent on these protections, it feels like it's staying way too long. Before we get to drafting ordinance, we absolutely need more engagement. That's been clarified tonight. There will be plenty of engagement. The housing crisis is so severe that I think you should be considering all policies at your disposal. That's policies to encourage the supply side and policies that help keep folks in housing that is affordable to them and minimize, minimizes the displacement pressure facing them. I'd encourage you to look at tenant protections from the lens of homelessness prevention. Through my volunteer work with the Society of St. Vincent's of Paul, the mission, I personally assisted a couple currently living in the River Bottom, who was a tenant at the Mission Hotel prior to its renovation in March of 2023. Those units are being converted into luxury apartments that are now being leased up for $2,200 per studio. I don't have time, please.
Our next speaker is Karen Hopper, followed by Shayna Steiner.
Hi. I really wasn't going to speak, but one of the things that I think is really important to note is that our housing shortage is probably one of our problems. And the unbelievably difficult process of getting a permit and the extreme cost of getting permits is probably not helping us to create affordable housing. And I think maybe it's getting better now, but I think it's time to address that side and make it a little bit easier and less costly for people to create affordable housing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shayna Steiner. Shayna, you should be able to tell me yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Alrighty, I will start off by saying landlords maybe get a different occupation. Maybe actually don't depend on a weird source of income that depends on exploiting people like those we've heard from tonight. I'm so inspired. I know I'm not there in person, but to have heard from all of you tenants who are organizing, and I want to urge everyone to form coalition tonight and to talk to everybody. I am definitely for a motion as a tenant that increases tenant protections, which is for some reason like the booby man to all of you landlords. I can't believe you're, we're not even talking about a rent app. Like, I think that you should take a break. But one point that I wanted to expand on was that the rental registry should be made publicly available and the owners of valid seats should be clearly identified. Tenants turn out the right to know who owns their homes so that they can collectively organize and struggle across properties. I also wanted to touch on the woman, I'm so sorry, I forgot your name, but who so aptly pointed out that legal workshops will not liberate us in our housing struggle. I couldn't agree more. Again, we need to be organizing. So having transparency across properties pays way for that. And obscuring it and letting landlords loot behind the scenes definitely feels deliberately like trying to stand in the way of tenant organizing. So yeah, please unionize. Please talk with everybody there tonight. I wish I could be there. I'm so sorry. Not landlords, read it, and we, we are going to be unionized. Good night. That's all.
Our next speaker is Janet Spritzler, followed by Mitch Lilly. And Janet, you should be able to tell me yourself.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for your time tonight. I hope you took some time during your break because, man, this is a full meeting. I'm Janet Spritzler, broker owner, rent 805, representing 45 property owners in the city of Ventura. I think it seems that there is agreement that SB 567 needs to have enforcement before another program is completed that also won't be enforced. Education is so badly needed for all. Councilmember Johnson, I'm very concerned about that application date that you talked about. Applications cover more than credit checks. They cover ID fraud, pay stub fraud, income-to-debt ratio, income verification, employment verification, and previous housing verification. These programs are conceit and not an income generator for our housing providers. In fact, our policy is anyone we do not even look at their application, they automatically get refunded back. We, that's just not an income generator for us. So anyone who pays $1,000 for 20 applications, which is $50, is a red flag. There's more going on there, and they would have had to have that information on why they denied 20 times. Where housing holds property management to follow laws and applications based on date and time of applications, and they're very high. Regarding the rental industry, if you own over four units in all the cities that you work in, we pay this tax for all housing providers. On top of that, the state automatically takes 7% of all those rents from all, doesn't matter how many units you have, takes them all. And then there's disclosure of private information to tenants that seems really overreaching. A tenant does know who their landlord is because it's listed in their lease. It's right in there. So with that said, currently in Ventura County, we have 1,903 units and 430 of them are in the city of Ventura. Two years ago, we only had 400 units. We are seeing prices coming down, and we hope to see what kind of education and look forward for people.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Our next speaker is Mitch Lilly. Mitch, you should be able to tell me yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, members of the city council. My name is Mitch Lilly. I'm a renter in the city of Ventura. And I'm speaking with you today as part of the Ventura tenants' union, where a grassroots organization dedicated to advocating for renters' rights and housing justice in Ventura County. I acknowledge the council's efforts to address homelessness, the tenant protections. I think this shows our understanding of a critical issue in our community and we see these issues together. In particular, the proposed rent reduction is a positive step, and we agree with the previous comments that the rights of council is desperately needed for tenants as well. But many of the renters currently fall significantly short in addressing this severe housing crisis in Ventura County. According to the CHAS data from 2013-2017, about 53.5% of city of Ventura rented households are cost burdened. And that's, you know, 58% are actually experiencing some form of housing problem, whether they're cost burdened, lacking a complete bathroom or bedroom, living in the garage, or where multiple tenants are forced to share. So the proposed tenant work plan, you know, it's a great, it's a great step in the right direction, but it's a very small step. It would really only cover about 1.6% of those 10,000 roughly households that are experiencing significant housing problems. And that is very likely that there are many more that would benefit from that, that may help. So we really urge the council to accept this work plan and to take more robust action in the future. The current tenant protections are woefully inadequate to meet the scale of the problem. There's a housing crisis. And yeah, I wanted to mention as well, unlike some of the other special interest speakers, you know, I'm not K. I don't have a fancy outfit on, even when you can't see it. I'm not seeing any K. I'm a volunteer, just a tenant for many tenants with the same kind of stories. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes our public speakers for the side of the Senate. Back to the council, councilmember Congress.
I want to remind our colleagues in everyone in the room and the staff. Many, many people among the speakers mentioned their focus on Senate Bill 1482 and followed by 567, which is billed as resolving the loopholes of 1482. A study done by Ventura college students, having seen the number of high school and college students who are homeless, determined that 40% of the student, of the renters in the city of Ventura are not covered by Senate Bill 1482. They're too small under the law to be covered by that. And those are tenants. They're, they're the mom and pop landlords, and those are the tenants who are most in need. And that's why this public engagement will be so important, and that's why I support this 100%.
Other comments? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, you know, I would note that every, everybody that spoke tonight had something worth hearing. There was a little problem, though. I don't think we saved much time in cutting time down to two minutes. But some of the speakers who had the most to say were forced to rush through their comments. And that makes it difficult for me as a policymaker when honestly, some people are forced to speak too quickly to get through their material. You know, when I was campaigning, I had a conversation with Dr. Mark Lepore. I was hoping he would support me. He's the medical director at, at Santa Paula and Ventura resident. And he asked me a question I was not prepared for, and it was a good question. But the question he asked me was, why are there so many poor people? And so I took my time and I thought about it and I just, you know, he gave what I thought was a very blunt answer, which is because that is what our system is designed to do. The fact is, we have a system where vulnerable people can be exploited for profit. And this colors every decision that I make. It's unfortunate, but that's, that's where it is. Now, to go through some of the things, Carbo, you know, I was just in Vienna for the, for the Taylor Swift concert. I will tell you, you know, the tickets to that I got for my birthday a year ago. We were looking forward to it. I had special shoes. But the concert was canceled because of terrorist attacks. But so one of the things we did when we were in Vienna is we went to the social housing. We went to a bunch of different places to look at it. So certainly I'm familiar with it. We're not ready for social housing. We're not ready for rent caps. I think we all, all acknowledge that. I'm familiar with RealPage, Nirvana, um, for those of you that don't know their allegations that landlords were illegally colluding to keep prices high. I had never had this, but that happens in Ventura, that there's some sort of collusion. Um, as I've said in the past, we have some fantastic landlords here. The overwhelming majority of landlords in this city are good people and they are not exploiting anybody. And there are some landlords that are bad. There are some tenants that are bad. I, all of you landlords out there, I would never take that on myself. I just, I just wouldn't do that. Now, I'm absolutely in support of what we have here. I agree with Dr. Alexander that this is woefully inadequate. Some of the discussion we had came about when we had problems with residents who were, by all accounts, having their rights under state law violated. It wasn't just Viaductura. A cause reached out to me for somebody mayor in your district that was having trouble. And I worked with the city, in the city's response, that we can't really do that. Our city attorney's not authorized to take this on. They couldn't get an attorney in the time that they need to be all getting an attorney in an apartment that was filled with mold. Well, they happened. I have seen this with the renovation that we had on the avenue. I called around trying to find a lawyer that could just give them some advice. I finally found one from Barbara McReortiz, who as some of you may, may remember, you know, one of the lions of tenants' rights in the county. She's now retired. She got me in touch with somebody that was willing to take it on for a very small amount, even though I'm not. And unfortunately, uh, the residents, um, and understandably thought that, well, if some attorney is showing up and offering to represent us, then how can you get us to build something's issue? But it was me. It was me. When Mr. Ake and I met the residents of Viaductura and heard what they were going through, I took it upon myself to try to find them an attorney. It never happened. I can, I can go through all the calls and emails I sent and so many, so many attorneys that, you know, are somewhere in the area that say they specialize in landlord tenant rights. You call them up and they're just, they just say, we do not represent tenants. And it's understandable because, you know, if somebody is looking at being evicted because they're not paying illegal rent increases, there's not a big need in that for an attorney. There just isn't. Absolutely, we should have a contract with the HRC. So how we got to the contract with the HRC was because I was one of the people saying, let's, we still have never done it. We have never authorized our city attorney to take this stuff off. All we have to do is just authorize them. And it gives them the authority. We've never done that. But so when I was saying, as Stephanie Caldwell from the chamber suggested, let's bring in, let's have an attorney on staff that can deal with these things. The response was, we could do that, but it would actually be so much easier if we went with HRC. And so for people, Mayor, I thank you for pointing this out. HRC works in over 100 cities. You know, this is not, this is, this is not some Friday night organization. I trust them when they come up with a dollar figure for what they think. What I would do though, and, and I'm going to hear from my other colleagues before we do a round with motions. I think that we should proceed with this, with direct staff to come back with an agreement, and I'm just going to say $150,000, for legal representation of tenants. We have heard, especially from people who maybe didn't read the staff report or heard about it secondhand, about how we already have all of these state laws. We do, but they're not being enforced. We as a city, we enforce state laws all the time. We enforce state traffic laws and the city goes to court representing the people. It's not a stretch for the city to make sure that state laws are being enforced. If we had tenants, attorneys, it would be a different discussion. But CRNA, they can take on maybe 5% of the people who call them. And so for me, when somebody comes to me and says, look what happened to my rent. Look at these fees. And, and I'll give you an example, you know, when the, when the landlord says, well, that's not our interpretation of 1482. Well, we just don't think it applies like that. Anybody attorney, including staff, say that's not how they see it. Well, what are they going to do? Where are they going to go? This is something that lots of other cities, it is something we can do. As somebody pointed out, you know, landlords that are following the laws don't need to worry about this. If it costs a lot of money, I want this council to think about this. If offering a right to counsel costs the city $300,000 or $400,000 or $500,000, what then is the extent of the problem we have with renters having their rights being violated? And what is the cost to the community? Those are my thoughts, thinking there.
Other comments or thoughts? Mr. Rick Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to ask staff on the topic of enforcement. So we've heard a lot of, uh, from the public comments in terms of lack of enforcement. Is that a code enforcement issue or where is this enforcement?
So when we talk about enforcement related to housing, it's really, um, through legal enforcement. So just as an example, state law limits the amount of rent increases you can do on an annual basis, because it's on CPI and additional percentage. And so let's say that someone, um, were to go beyond that, for example. This is really enforcement through a determining or legal services to basically put the landlord on notice that they're in violation to work for mediation, et cetera. Um, that's really the way that we see it versus a code enforcement issue from our main staff.
We had people talking about code enforcement issues. Wh- where are we as a jurisdiction in terms of enforcing just a building code?
Oh, in terms of enforcing the building code, we have, um, a staff of code enforcement inspectors that effectively, um, work throughout the city, mostly on a complaint basis, but also proactively to enforce a wide range of regulations from building codes to zoning ordinance. And so we have a team of, who are right now that are out in the field doing those things.
So do the tenants, uh, that are having issues know how to get them in touch with code enforcement?
So if it's a, if it's an issue related to something in your building and safety, our current code enforcement team can help with that. But if it's something related to, for example, um, violation of state law, our code enforcement doesn't, um, yeah. Yeah, so they can call our city and file a complaint and get in touch with code enforcement for any issues, like for example, some of the physical issues that some of the buildings are having, like tenant termites or, um, physical damage.
So how is that happening? What is our response?
So, um, it, it's not that often that we have issues from tenants going to code enforcement because again, I think most of the time they're looking for legal services. When they do come to code enforcement, we follow up with inspections, talking to the landlord and dealing with, um, trying to get the issue rectified first. And if it's not, then we issue citations. And we continue to issue citations until the issue is dealt with and addressed.
So and what does issuing a citation mean beyond the fact that you're giving me a fixed ticket?
It's a, it's a ticket that has a fee associated with it. And I'll, I'll be honest and say that similarly, one of the issues that we have is ultimately when, um, you know, after multiple tickets, um, if the issue still isn't addressed, we can, um, we can deal with getting the fees, um, in certain ways. But in order to actually get someone to comply, we need to take them to court. And what we're missing as well for the code enforcement standpoint is the, um, resources to, um, use outside counsel to go to court for a lot of these issues. That's where we stop the process.
What is the fine, the ticket fee?
Uh, I believe it's, uh, between $150,000 and $200,000 per ticket.
So what would prevent us from exploring going to a thousand person state?
I think we could with the amendment to the code related to penalties. That's, there's nothing stopping us from that.
There's already a reason that we wouldn't charge what I was going to continue to call the hopes and solutions committee for doing that as part of this process.
We can certainly bring that forward. It's a little bit outside of the purview that we discussed previously today. Um, but certainly related to housing issues, we, you know, we couch it as that and talk about violations related to housing and, and talk about potential, um, fee amendments. And I think we just have to be reasonable in that fee.
And then in terms of, uh, well, I mean, just to kind of close it out. I mean, I don't understand why we wouldn't do strict enforcement, you know, in terms of, we have a code. As, uh, Councilmember Johnson pointed out, you know, we enforce all kinds of codes. You know, we, we should be zealously, uh, doing that. Um, in terms of the, uh, HRC contract, when does that, assuming that it got approved tonight, when would that?
So, um, that professional service agreement with the Housing Rights Center will go into effect September 1st if it's approved tonight.
So next week?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then, so looking through it, we're budgeting about 1,040 hours for case management, uh, to have two case managers work on.
Yes, so one's staff attorney, one's, um, law fellow and two case managers.
So would it be realistic, you know, in terms of, you know, assuming this gets approved tonight, that we could get an update in January in terms of where we are with this contract? And if it, you know, is it actually making a difference? You know, I think as part of this larger conversation, you know, do we need to bring an attorney, uh, either on staff, you know, about that time we'll start our budget discussions? And at the same time, you know, hopefully we have a new city attorney and, you know, we can have that larger discussion. Would it be realistic to get an update exactly where we are in January in terms of going through this contract?
Absolutely. We can also bring it to the subcommittee as well, just to have it on record and make sure that people can see the implications.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a couple of questions regarding the HRC. Um, we currently have a contract with HRC, yeah?
Yes, that is correct.
And so this, um, $80,000 would expand to specifically do that outreach by HRC?
So as of right now, we have a contract with the Housing Rights Center for $10,000 because it's a requirement of federal regulations that would apply to their housing services. So the additional, um, funding for this particular contract would include like mediation services, the outreach and education, as well as, um, you know, the in-person and virtual workshop that they're going to be doing, clinics for us, and it also accounts for all the staff kind of resources.
And prior to having them do all of that, does any data exist in terms of, um, uh, lack of enforcement or where enforcement is needed most? Or, um, the number of residents who require the assistance? Do we have any data that indicates where we're at with that?
Um, as of right now, we don't have data specifically for that because as of right now, the Housing Rights Center is solely focused on their housing services. But they do receive a number of phone calls and inquiries, email as well, from tenants and landlords seeking information about general landlord tenant rights to responsibilities. So that is something that we can pay for the Housing Rights Center or report back to council on.
And just for clarification in regards to, um, the legal representation that has been mentioned with that, then let's say we go that round, um, assuming Councilmember Johnson's, um, uh, possible recommendation of the $150,000, would that be for legal representation? So like, how would that be worked through with the HRC? Like, what are some of the factors that they've done in other areas?
Yes, so, um, so one area to talk about specifically is for the city of, um, the city of Los Angeles. So for the city of Los Angeles, for their rights and council program, um, it's called, yeah, it's called State House of LA. Um, essentially what they've been doing is that if a tenant approaches them and they say like, for example, you know, under AB 1482, my rate increase should only be 10%, I've got 14% rate increase, then they go ahead and write a violation letter to the housing provider. And then if the housing provider does not respond to that violation or refuses to rectify that illegal rate increase, that's when they will then do some type of legal action against them and sometimes I just proceeds to grab the housing provider's board.
Okay. And who normally, we, we talked earlier about fees, um, who normally sets the fees, uh, in this particular case for a violation? Would that be the HRC? Or is that codified somewhere in state law or?
So there, we have local, um, fees associated with violating home rules for these violations. The fees come from an alternative plan.
Yes, so if there are violations, so either A will happen is that, that either they will utilize whatever the city county has in place in terms of violations. But typically, when you're thinking about violations that it's, you know, that involves like rate increases, you know, change in terms of tenancies that don't abide by state, like state law, typically they set like a violation fee that's a little bit substantial. Sometimes they're ranging between $500 to $1,500 for violation.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
I have a couple. I'm getting a sense from us that, uh, we can't solve all of this tonight. So when I listen to my fellow city council members, I'm hearing, um, maybe you need to come back to us with, uh, uh, related data, uh, fee structure examination. I would say stricter enforcement and then costs for, uh, legal representation. I'm, I'm not sure, um, that we can come up with that dollar amount tonight, but I sure would like if you came back. I'm ready to support what we have in front of us tonight, but I'm not sure it's enough. But I'd appreciate it if staff could come back and give us some recommendations or some options on some of those.
Would you like, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, would you like us to come back after we engage with the community or before?
Oh, Lordy, I want you to come back quick, but you can't get to the community quickly over and over again. But I don't, I, I'm not sure that, uh, the seven of us want to do this independent of getting feedback from the community. I'll leave that to the rest of the city council to discuss. That's a great question, thank you. Mr. Durant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks again, staff, for all the information. And I, I want to thank our community for all the, the input. We really appreciate it. You know, we're paying $10,000 here right now. I'm just curious, um, I'm, I'm sure that you just reported what, how many residents use our services over here? Um, do you have those numbers?
So as of our professional services agreement with the Housing Rights Center, they are, um, designated to serve a minimum of 100 residents and other program of residential tenants.
And do they serve that?
Yes, that is correct.
I mean, right now, that's what they're serving?
Yes, that's what they're projected. We have never seen their final report for fiscal year 23, 24, but it's been projected that they have served a minimal 100 residents.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm ready to make a motion if, if that's okay. So I, just a couple of changes. Um, on item A, I'd like, I'd like to, um, so we have A, B, C, and D. C and D are absolutely fine. On item A, I'd like to say approve public On item A, I'd like to say approve public outreach, um, instead of what we have as a work plan, because that is the work plan we're going to public outreach. And then in item B, uh, the verbiage would just include all stakeholders and residents of the city of Ventura. So, so we just include all stakeholders. And support the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
So Councilmember, um, Durant, just to straighten it out, on item B, are you saying authorize that Housing Rights Center to provide to all stakeholders? Is that what you?
So read, read the whole thing through, all stakeholders, tenant counseling, mediation, education, workshop, your housing services, for, um, for all residents and stakeholders in the city of Ventura. So just adding the two together.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Halter, then Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, um, and thank you again, staff. I just want to mention that, you know, we all know that, uh, we have a huge problem. As we started out earlier this evening, that, uh, housing, affordable housing, uh, is in the, uh, our housing bell curve has been significantly broken for a lot of reasons. And, um, we have to fix it. And, um, I know that part of that problem is the lack of ability to build housing here and the limitations, the artificial limitations we've put on for many, many years. And we're paying the price for it. And I also feel that the process itself, we know that twenty-five to thirty percent of the cost of every new home is the process and the holding costs. That all adds up to a much more expensive house and a larger mortgage. There's also, um, building the same stock home over and over again. Instead of having the bell curve of entry-level housing, mid, middle income, albeit expensive middle-income housing, and higher-end housing. All of that's very important for a sustainable community. And we have pretty much destroyed that balance over the last thirty or forty years. And we have to recreate it. And unfortunately, a lot of the young people, people just starting out, are really paying the price. And that's why we're becoming an older, wealthier community. Unfortunately, we're only wealthier because our houses are worth a lot of money. But if you're here to stay, you're not here to move to Texas or Arizona, Nevada, or places with much larger carbon foot, carbon footprints than in California. Then we don't care how much our houses are worth, you know? And we don't care if you're gonna catch out and move someplace else. So we have issues, and this is a tip of the iceberg. What we're talking about tonight, um, is about, um, getting, uh, outreach, outreach from all members of our community, uh, from all the, all the stakeholders. And yes, tenants are absolutely part of the stakeholders. We can't be naive about that. They absolutely are a key part. So, so that has to happen. What we're doing tonight, uh, there's some things that I think are almost no winners. I think things like the seventy-nine thousand dollar contract that HRC gives, um, is a must. I think that's something we should do. And I think that Councilmember McReynolds had hit right on it. And he said, "Come back in December or January with probably January and see how we're doing. And see if we need to refund it, you know, add more funds to it." Does that bet you a lot of us will? There's other things like that, that enforcement, enforcement, again, why do we make laws that we can't enforce? You know, whether there's state laws, local laws, county laws? Uh, it's just, it's frustrating. It makes a lot of us look like fools. Um, we can't enforce laws, um, in, in a consistent way. And especially when our vulnerability to weather. And so those are things that I think most of us, um, would, would agree upon. I get concerned when we dive too deep into this. If we start talking about, um, rental registry, if we start talking about, uh, rent stabilization, if we start talking about, well, those are the two biggest ones. They absolutely cannot be decided until we go out for, um, for all the stakeholders to have that point, that chance at the end of the table. We have to hear all the pros and cons. And I have the utmost faith that we could come up with the fairest and best way forward, knowing that we all know we have a big problem. And, uh, so with that, if there's a motion I, I am concerned, I will say this. This motion on the table. And when I see things like the homelessness plan, that is part of what we're approving tonight, right? And that's on page three to five. Okay, enforcement of crime law, hope and solutions subcommittee, the rental registry. So that's already approved?
Tonight, uh, tonight we'll just, um, approving, um, the HRC contract as well as, I mean, that's really the main thing, and the out.
Okay.
Councilmember Halter, for, for clarification, the motion on the table adjusted recommendation A. So instead of it being approved, the tenant protections work plan, it would just be approved, uh, moving forward with the public outreach.
Okay, perfect. Then that, just wanted to make sure, because I've been caught on this early on when it first got out, like, four years ago. So I'm cautious. So I want to make sure that, um, that everything that I was just reading off is part of the tenant protection work plan. It's not attached to B, C, or D. If that's the case, then I'll support the motion.
Um, that is my understanding of the motion, if the motion may be confirmed as well?
That, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, just so everybody understands, what our current contract with HRC, we have one of the smaller contracts. Um, but it's, it's for fair housing, really, and the federal law. This is for people who feel that they've been discriminated against on the basis of being a member of the protected class. Um, one of the key differences in what we're talking about is offering the services of HRC to everybody, whether or not they're in a protected class. And then of course, things such as mediation. I will note that, you know, my expectation of mediation should reduce any litigation that there is. Um, and going to court, the, the letters and that we're gonna report of, what our attorneys think is a violation of state law is, it's a, it's a pretty big step. It's a pretty big step. The question about the data intrigues me. No, we don't really have that. And when we went through this, the answer to not having the data is the rental registry. If we want to know how often this happens, we need the rental registry. Landlords are not going to come to us and tell us that they've raised the rent fourteen percent. And some of our most vulnerable community members are not going to either. So I will not be supporting the motion. Can we go back to slide nine, please? So this is what we're talking about, and this is what has been stricken from the motion. All of this has been replaced with community engagements. In these future actions, it starts with community workshops. The motion says, well, we're just gonna not do the other stuff before even having any community engagements. You know, council has to evaluate rent registry program because there is an outstanding directive from council. And if my colleagues want to change that, then do. But we can't have council directions sit for years and years and years. It's not fair to staff. It is not fair, and Ms. Rollins, Ms. Rollins, many times, many times, I'm like, what about the rental registry? And she can't answer it. So with that, Mayor, I will be making a substitute motion. I will move staff's recommendations plus E, direct city staff, direct the community development staff, whatever, direct staff to return to us with, uh, the cost and the details of a contract with HRC providing legal representation through the end of the fiscal year. I will not put a date on that. I will, on a side note, Mr. City Manager, advise you that you're gonna need about eight meetings during the month of January with all of the things that council has told you to bring back in January. Um, but, you know, one of the great things about working with HRC is this is their bread and butter. This is what they do. They will have a really good idea. And so again, my motion is staff's recommendation plus return to us with the information about providing legal representation. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion on that?
Um, Mayor, could I ask one?
Please.
Clarifying question. Um, Councilmember Johnson, uh, you noted staff's recommendation, so you would keep, um, recommendation A of approving the work plan?
Okay, thank you.
A question, is, is slide nine considered the work plan?
That's what would account for item A in the recommendation, the assets moving through those steps.
Okay, uh, any, yes, Mr. Halter?
Just for clarity, so everything that I read earlier is now included back into this motion?
Say that again?
All the items I read earlier that were part of the work plan are now back into this motion, substitute motion.
Yes.
Including the rental registry, including looking at, um, rent control.
The, the work plan shown on the, the screen for future actions, to clarify, um, Councilmember Halter, would include working with the community to determine what next steps would occur, including a potential rent registry as we show here. But it could be any number of programs at this point. Engaging the community would allow us some lengthly to decide what's moving forward. In addition, rent registry has been on the list of items from city council. So we anticipate including that, but certainly we'll work with the community to determine, you know, with, with their input, what we move forward with towards this group.
So, Ms. Diamond, this is, um, to come back with, um, information on those items?
That's correct.
It's not approval of those items, it's coming back with information in January.
It would be conduct the community workshops in October, November, and then come back in January, um, to, uh, Hope, our, excuse me, Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee. And, uh, then we would also engage with the planning commission and come back to council with those recommendations.
Just bringing up the fact that when we did the housing element, we approved something very easy that a lot of us liked most of it. But there's definitely concerns that need to be, oh, vetted on some of the, uh, in the, in the housing element. So they're put in there as things to be looked at. They were not put in there as things that we must do. And that's, that was clearly when we did that three years ago. So I want to make sure that we're not changing direction from that. So I could support this if it's coming back to share information, okay, on, um, the way forward. Hopefully, we have some public input on before then that would be part of the way forward. And, uh, then some final, um, uh, stakeholder meetings to make sure we're fully vetted. Because I doubt three years' once is more than, is not, is enough time to fully vet it.
So are you looking for additional, um, community engagement beyond four workshops with the community?
You think you could do four within the next three months?
Absolutely. We'll do two in person and two virtually to make sure that we can allow most attendance. We'll reach out, um, with a huge effort with our, um, community engagement team, um, and communications team to make sure that people know that the meetings are happening. We're looking at other ways to engage with the community to make sure people understand, whether it be mail, or use ATMs, do your water bill, any ways which we can get to people that don't normally show up so that we can hear from people who are typically part of our processes.
Okay, I guess I would be a realist to some extent. I'm often, there's most of the time. But the fact is that, um, knowing what we went through, which you have, and trying to schedule, especially around holidays, which were about rainstorm, um, it became extremely difficult. And so, uh, I would probably put a stipulation that all four workshops are gonna be for contractors.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's a grand, um, amendment to the motion.
Uh, I, I don't see any for amendment because, you know, there's, there are discrete steps. And so you don't have things coming back to council, um, according to this until June. I think that's when they apply.
Yeah. Yeah, I see that there. But I'm wondering, you have, um, just complete, complete community workshops right November, twenty twenty-four. And I don't see four workshops there.
We didn't include the number, but it's in the staff recording and the presentation as well, with two in person and two virtual.
Okay, the Deputy Mayor, then Mr. Durant?
I just, um.
Excuse me? No?
It's not, oh, did, go ahead. He's, oh, well, I just wanted to, um, because I, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Diamond, in terms of we'll have these community, um, workshops, we'll get input from them. But I, but I also feel like this, this sets the stage, this sets the tone for the direction that the city would be heading into, um, prior to even engaging in those community conversations. So I'm just trying to understand, um, if we go this route, I mean, our, our, can we change midway if we need to? Um, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that because I, I just feel like we're saying we'll have a community input, but we're saying this is the agenda for the community input.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, the tenant protection program, um, as we discussed previously, has been, um, recommended in a number of documents for the city. So we've had this, um, this program in the works for quite some time, and we've been looking at what other communities are doing and looking at what tools they have in their toolbox. And realistically, there's, there's a limited set of things you can do, right? There's kind of the top ten things that communities do, um, to work, to help with tenant protections, right? And so I think that we have kind of the, the, the maximum amount of things that we could do and under an umbrella of tenant protections. I think you heard a lot of those things from the community, you heard them from us. I think there's a lot of fear around certain, um, aspects of that. And so what we anticipate doing is talking through all these things with the community, first setting the stage and helping them understand what conditions are, um, within state law, within local law, and what we can and can't do, so they understand kind of the limits of what tenant protections could be. But then ultimately engaging and getting meaningful feedback, some of which we've really gotten tonight. So this actually was super helpful as well to hear from people what works and doesn't work, and engage with them on the details about that. So if we were to, um, use certain tools that we know work in certain communities, what does that look like for Ventura? And how do we make it specific to the city of Ventura and our residents and our other, you know, landlords, stakeholders, and the community at large? Whatever recommendations that we, um, come up with from those, um, workshops, we'll then go back to the Housing and Homelessness Sub, Subcommittee and talk through those recommendations, and really start to form what is a full work plan and, and kind of a full picture of the program. And also start to talk about some of the details, like how we could potentially fund such a work plan, again, depending on how complex it is. And so at that point, we still haven't formalized anything because ultimately, you're the final policy decision makers here. So nothing will be set in stone until we come back to council for final adoption. So at any point in that process, um, getting input from the Subcommittee, going back to the Planning Commission, speaking with the community, and then coming here, anything related to that can change. Ultimately, if we decide to add or subtract program or policies or programs within this larger program, we can absolutely make those changes. And things change and conditions change. And so, you know, six months from now, something may, uh, come up that is a brand-new solution to this issue that we can also tackle. So if something new comes up or someone comes up with a new idea, we're open to making changes at any point. And I think what's helpful is our staff is extremely flexible and they're extremely knowledgeable in a wide range of housing issues. So some of these things we see as potentially being able to take our in-house. And then there are other things that we can reach out to the broader housing, um, you know, advocacy community, at the legal community to help us fill those gaps. So we really have the ability to pivot however we want. This is your, ultimately, your decision. And I really want to highlight that. This is your decision and, and not staff's decision. And so I think a lot of the concern that we're doing this behind closed doors, unfortunately, unfortunately, is not accurate because ultimately, you make whatever decision that you see fit for the community, and we're here to implement that however you let us do.
I appreciate that. Um, thank you for, for saying that. Um, and I think lastly, I would just, uh, recommend that, um, funding, uh, there be a discussion on funding these programs, um, especially because it's a state-driven directive. Um, you know, is there state funding? Is there other funding that we can look at, um, in terms of being able to, uh, implement such program? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McReynolds and Ms. Durant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, thank you for your comments. Councilmember Halter, I think, you know, I know, I know what you're, what you're talking about right now. And I want you to know that what I'm looking at right here, it says complete community workshop November, awesome. Present workshop meeting back to Hope and Solutions Committee and gather recommendations from Subcommittee, January 2025. Then we jump right into analyzing the value of the rent registry. What if, what if in that information that we got, they don't, all of the stakeholders, all of the residents, don't, don't want a rent registry? What if they say no to that? Now, here we are, and since we were talking about that, that's why I said, let's do the public outreach, let's bring it back to Hope, let's go from there. We're adding these things that we, we didn't, we didn't do at the Hope's committee meeting. What we said at the Hope's meeting is we're going to pay for this, and we're going to, we're going to do public engagement. That's what we said, and so I will be supporting this.
Mr. McCroun?
So I kind of want to walk through a couple of items. So regarding meetings, we asked that the survey be done by August 31st, and I understand you have a dial-in. So you believe that the November 24th, having community workshops done, or it's called November, as a hard date, can be done?
Absolutely, the, the, the point of the workshops is for them to be the same, so that you only need to attend one of the workshops, so that we can reach out to the most amount of people, and so that will be helpful in creating a program, and again, be able to schedule it pretty quickly. What we can do is get meetings scheduled, so that our next city council meeting, we have dates to announce, and we can follow up and include that in a consent item, and that'll be one additional way for us to reach out and make sure people know about those dates.
So in these meetings, tell me about my, how that's going to work.
Well, I, I can't speak to how, we haven't crafted the details of how the meetings are going to work, but we'll have a translator available at a minimum. And we, I think we see the need for, if we could have one meeting that's specific to Spanish speakers as well. And so one of the in-person and one of the virtual meetings could be more focused on speaking in Spanish as the primary language, and then English as the translation for those who want to attend, if that could work as well.
Okay. That's an option. Again, we haven't finalized the details of this, we were hoping to get endorsement of the meetings and then move forward. Initially, we anticipated hiring outside, outside consultants to help us moderate the meetings, and that may be something that we continue to do, just to have the ability to help, you know, work through all of the comments. It sounds like there are a lot of people interested in coming to these workshops and providing input, so we want to make sure that we can engage with all of them.
So, moving on to the second item, this will be my big ask, is, one of my concerns is, we've got the election, we're going to have two new council members, and then the Hope's committee is going to reset. So I feel like we're starting like over, to a large extent, i- in terms of that. So then, because you're, you're talking about bringing back in January to an entirely new committee who hasn't had any of the other information. So it seems a little bit unfair i- in terms of that. So my ask would be if the new mayor would, and if the current Hope's committee members would be willing to serve another year, to consider that. Because I think that would help expedite the process. But again, that's not something that I can really ask, so it's more maybe a consideration here.
And I appreciate the comment, it's, it's definitely something that we deal with as staff and the turnover of elected officials, particularly on these types of subcommittees. In the event that there are other council members that are serving on that Subcommittee, we can definitely make the first meeting of that Subcommittee of a new group, a, a catch-up meeting where we provide a lot of additional background information as well, should anyone need more information about what we've been working on, our programs, et cetera, so they can get up to see it.
Okay, moving into the third box, so you did an RFP, and it came back at half a million dollars to do this. We've heard an inordinate amount of people coming up today, talking about this. So this thing has to be done perfectly, and so you decided we're going to bring it in-house. I don't understand how we believe we have the expertise to do it internally, on something that is obviously going to be scrutinized to the nth degree by all parties. Why would we bring that in-house?
Well, I think the project management of this program has been brought in-house, but there are certainly not only opportunities, but with the example of HRC, we're utilizing outside services because we don't have that expertise in-house. So all of the legal services are happening outside of city hall, as an example. With the rent registry, initially part of the work plan that was presented to the Subcommittee was that we would go out to RFP to get someone to start working on the fee evaluation and determine a program fee. And ultimately, the Subcommittee wanted us to pause on that until we engage with the community. But that as well, we, should we move forward with something like a rent registry, we do have the ability to create a physical app in-house. So our IT team is incredible, and they can build out a rent registry program where it's web-based and you can go online, and it would be something that's actually very reasonable for us to build out internally. But the establishment of the fee would be, for example, something that we would want to consult with our fee consultants that we work with on an annual basis to feel our fees are free. These, that's something that we don't have expertise in-house.
Again, I remind you of the situation with Pay Parking, where staff did its own study, and it was torn apart. I, I, I'm very hesitant to give down this, this road with staff, I don't feel like we're setting the goal for success.
I, you know, I definitely hear the concern, and, you know, again, I think, looking at holistically what it would take to go outside for someone to create this program, the only response we got was for $500,000. So if we want to go in that direction where we completely farm out 100% of this, that's what we're looking at right now.
Understood, and then I'm just going to jump to the last one. Again, I'm going to use the word pre-ordered, it sounds like we're pre-ordering the outcome by the approving this tonight.
And I apologize for that, it's draft ordinance if needed, right? So some of the things that we, you know, that we conceptualize as tenant protections would require amendment to our municipal code, and others don't. And so if whatever we decide on, and whatever the council directs staff to do requires ordinance, then we would come back. Otherwise, if we resign, it would be just a motion from council, or a renewal of a contract, or other things that also bring this program together. So it'll be kind of a range of things, depending on what we end up with. It's certainly possible that, you know, if we engage with the community and they want less of these programs, and so we would be, you know, engaging in a minimum now to, you know, again, some of what we've heard from the community, doing a lot, you know, rights, legal services, and above the higher end of the program.
Mr. Duran?
I have a, so if you're uncomfortable with the third box, would you be more comfortable if it said complete analysis and evaluation of final options and recommendations?
I'm good with the first two boxes, the first two boxes.
If you're struggling with the third box?
Yes.
So, so instead of that language, the substitute language, say it might be an option would be complete analysis and evaluation of final options and recommendations?
Yeah, that's perfect, because when we get it at the, at the Hope's committee, that, that would be the next step, and that, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, and the only suggestion I would make is make that March, not February, because I don't think they can do it for 30 months and then give up.
Yes.
No warning, we're getting from Mr. McCroun, which I think is appropriate.
Absolutely, and, and I'm good with that, but we have a motion and a second on the table right now.
Would, would somebody accept that as a friendly amendment?
Oh, it's, it's a different motion.
So, so my motion is the one that's off? No, no, that is, I would not accept that.
Just so we could be clear, could the clerk please restate the motion? Yes, so Councilmember Johnson's motion is to move staff's recommendation plus direct staff to return with cost and details of a contract with HRC for legal representation until the end of the calendar year?
At the end of the fiscal year.
Fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, yes, Mr. Halter?
Yeah, for reference, and this is the, the substitute motion, so the original motion is, if you repeat that.
Come back to that.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I wanted to know what the original motion was.
Do you have the original motion?
I can.
This is the previous motion by Councilmember Halter on the screen.
Got it.
So Councilmember Duran's motion was to approve staff's recommendation with two edits. One to Recommendation A, to approve the public outreach aspect of the tenant protection work plan, which in, in the staff report is known as community workshops. And then to make a small edit to B, to read the final couple of words, to read "and fair housing services for all stakeholders and residents of the city of Ventura."
Right, but, but what we're voting on, can you read Mr. Johnson's motion, please?
One more time?
Yeah, sure. So that was to move staff's recommendation plus direct staff to return with cost and details of a contract with HRC for legal representation until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Let's vote.
Okay, so we'll be voting on Councilmember Johnson's recommendation. You can now adjourn. Vote fails, five minutes.
Is there, I'll entertain another motion?
Mayor, I would like to make a substitute motion.
Hey, I've got, Mr. Duran and Mr. Johnson?
We have the vote, we have the motion on the table right now.
So the substitute motion, Mr. City Attorney, perhaps to clarify, we had the motion, the substitute motion failed, there's now a for another substitute motion.
That is a good question, you may have to give me a second to have it answered right.
Or, there's no limits to the number of substitute motions.
So do I have another substitute motion, Mr. Duran, if you wanted to?
Mine's, mine's still there, he wants another substitute.
Okay.
I am making another substitute motion, and that is in the staff's recommendation.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I want to clarify, clarify a couple of things. First, nothing in the housing element is optional. Those are all things that we committed to do. I voted against the housing element, one of the things I said was, there are all these programs in there, and council doesn't understand the implications of the costs of these things. And you voted for that housing element, and one of the things you committed to was to hold public hearings with the planning commission to review options for tenant protection policy that counter the effects of economic displacement in early 2024, with commission recommendations forwarded to the city council by July 2021. We are far from on that. I note with great disappointment that when we were talking about opening the foul weather shelter more often, that one of the arguments why we shouldn't do it was because then we'd be opening it more often than we committed to on the housing element. We can't use our housing element to like pick and choose for our agenda. And I have said so many times that we need as a council to have a budget document come to us just on the housing element, like the CIP, with timelines for implementation and costs spread out, because some of these things are expensive, this is one of the things I talked about when I explained why I could not support the housing element, that some of these programs that were really agreed to and to invitation-only closed-door meetings, that was the extent of public outreach, these things were promised in order to get support. Okay, but so we have this, it's not bad, we're behind, we can fix it. What I find disappointing is, yeah, there will be a change in council, there will be potentially a change in the Hope's committee. But what we're doing here with Councilmember Duran's motion is putting a gag order, you are not allowed to use these words. We talked about community involvement, well, don't look into this one thing. As I've said before, there is an outstanding directive by council to look into this, and it's not a commitment. It's not, what there is is a great fear we've been talking about. Again, tonight, where's the data? Well, let's get the data. It's, it's something we can do. I will tell you that the rental registry, the rental registry, when I wrote that policy consideration on rental victions, it was Peter Gilligan that wanted the rental registry and said, we can do this. This is not something that staff is incapable of undertaking, and I have faith in staff that this is something that they can do. You know, $500,000 sounds like an incredible amount of money, I don't think anybody's talking about spending that type of money. But what has never happened yet in all these two years, the staff has never come back to us and said, realistically, this is what we're looking at. This is, this is what the burden will be on staff, this is what it's going to cost on staff, and this is what it's going to cost in outside council. And this is the timeline, and given council that data before making a decision. And so I have real qualms about shutting the door on something for a future council. We talk about community outreach, and now we're afraid that the community will tell us to do this. So what we have here is staff's recommendation. If you want to change, you know, it, it has analyze and evaluate a rent registry and program fee by 2023. That's one option for all the things that we need to do according to the housing element. According to the housing element, I guess we're skipping the planning commission, and we're going to involve them, it's one of a number of things. There's also in the, in the housing element, a thing about the right of first return, which is another policy we have not really discussed. It's a whole suite of tools. Why council wants to prevent even a discussion about one of those tools that a prior council wanted to do 7.0, I, I find troubling. And if council wants to kill the rental registry, then council needs to kill the rental registry and stand up and stand before your voters and say that you oppose the rental registry without even hearing what it might cost or what the timeline would be. I know some of you have had sit-downs with people where they tell you, this is the worst thing to ever happen. It is for landlords who break the law. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Duran, can I, if, if there's significant feedback in, in the workshops that we have, and some of that feedback is rental registry, then we, we would have to perform an analysis on that, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem with that, we, we want the feedback, we want the information, and whatever comes out, it comes out. But based on how it's written, it seems like we're already, we're already there.
Okay, so you're not saying hell no to the registry, you're saying?
That's fair, that's fair.
That's, yeah, yes, Mr. Halter, and Deputy Mayor?
I was going to say is that, you know, it's been, it's interesting, there's any, we could paint any picture we want to paint, and some of it, some of it can. We've been watching that for years at the national level, and I see it's fair as well. But the reality is, is that, you know, my mistake was believing that the housing element would come back to us. And this is previous staff, it was before all you guys were here, but it was supposed to come back to us. In G-PAC, it was, it was made. supposed to come back to us. In GPAC, it was it was made to hit a state kind of area to get it in there in time. And then it was made to come back for us to review it again and make modifications. Okay, so it's not about picking and choosing. As a matter of fact, we put everything that homes were all written out because a lot of it is really good, but we need to have that conversation. And God forbid, we want to get all the stakeholders at the table to discuss this. So I'm not saying no to the to the rental registry. I'm saying I want to hear what the stakeholders have to say. Because quite frankly, I know for 15 years, I've given all the information to this city for my first home that ran out that happens to be a tract. Okay, so I know they have the information already. So it's not about that. I just want to make sure we're not duplicating our efforts and not asking people who are working hard, trying to make a living, trying to live here and trying to create houses for people that need houses, okay, and pay for their own mortgages. That we're not making it impossible for them because they're busy filling out paperwork for the bureaucracy. That's a big part. And that's something that I'm just really despised as a governor. I need things to be efficient. I need for a time well spent. The thing I know very clearly is that life is very short. Every day is important. So what we do needs to be purposeful. It needs to be succinct. It needs to be efficient. And it needs to be not redundant paperwork shoved across somebody's desk because somebody wanted to track that data. So I resent the fact that we're painting a picture that really isn't true. The fact is, we have time. And I agree with Councilmember Durant. I will not be voting for another motion that says staff recommendations and doesn't say get all the stakeholders' information first. So that's what I'm going to say. I say you keep doing motion after motion after motion until we're here reannoying. But I will not be supporting it. And if it doesn't say get stakeholders' information.
Councilmember Campos.
So responding to my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Halter. If you look at what we're being presented, it starts with engagement with everyone. And then it moves through the steps of what we have told our staff to look at. And those things will be discussed in the engagement. If we take any one of them out, it weakens the entire process. And it's a slap in the face to any community members who want to participate in engagement about that item. It's like saying, oh, you know, you can talk about everything, oh, but not this. So it's kind of taking a control and tying the hands of the staff. There's nothing that says we have to do that. It just is one of the questions that's being asked.
Deputy Mayor.
I'll call for the vote, please.
That requires a vote, I believe. Call for a vote.
There was a, yes, so we had an original motion, then we, Councilmember Durant's original motion and a substitute motion by Councilmember Johnson. The substitute motion failed. Then Councilmember Johnson moved another substitute motion. So I believe that we are on that. However, I will defer to the city attorney to clarify or to overrule.
That is correct. We will vote on the substitute motion, the second substitute motion. Could you please read that motion?
Yeah, the second substitute motion by Councilmember Johnson is just to approve staff's recommendation.
And there was a second on that motion?
Yes, there was. Councilmember Campos.
Okay, we're ready to vote on that, please.
You can now enter your vote. All votes have been entered. The motion fails. Five nays.
So we're back to Mr. Durant's motion, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Further discussion on that? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a substitute motion. I'd like to move Councilmember Durant's motion and in addition, direct city staff to bring on a staff attorney in the city attorneys department devoted to housing and the housing legal issues. And and do that by March 1st.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Councilmember Johnson, could I ask a clarifying question?
I expect so, yes.
It was to to evaluate bringing on an attorney?
No, I find the money and do it.
To bring on an attorney by March?
By March 1st.
An in-house attorney?
An in-house attorney in the city attorneys department. Expand the city attorney staff on one, make whatever necessary changes there are to the budget for an attorney to focus on these issues. And I want to thank Stephanie Caldwell for her support on this. I don't need to, I don't, I don't want to put words in this Caldwell's mouth, but I appreciate that her support of the general idea.
Questions? Let's vote, please.
Oh, no.
Mr. Halter?
These workings, straight workings, it's difficult. How would that impact HRC? Would be an addition funding HRC? I assume that's the decision.
Yes, that is correct. We would still move forward with the contract for the services proposed, so up until mediation. So the community would still be getting those services between now and March. And then after that, the city would provide the additional legal services with an in-house attorney.
And we have the confidence in knowing, I have not seen any data that, but is we have the confidence in knowing that there is enough workload to support two or three hundred thousand a year lawyer in-house. Where's the data?
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, ma'am. I think that question would have been directed to me. It's a little hard to say without a rental registry, isn't it?
It's a little hard. Yours, okay.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll take a vote.
I just want to make a quick comment before we go. You know, we're going to be heading to the city attorney. So that might be something to wait on before we move forward.
Okay. Vote on the substitute?
Yes, the third substitute motion to move Councilmember Durant's motion plus the addition to bring on a staff attorney to address tenant housing and legal issues by March 1st, 2025. Okay. You may now enter your vote. All votes have been entered. The motion fails. Five nays.
Mr. Durant.
I have a substitute motion. I would like to have the HRC contract added to this in terms of bringing forward a report in January on the status and at the same time expanding potential to expanding the legal services at that time. That would be brought before the HOPEs and Solutions Committee in January and then brought forward to the full council thereafter for full consideration, along with the community feedback, community outreach on how to proceed in February, March.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Is the wording the same on anything else? And we're taking the bottom off that last line that just failed with the attorney?
Yes.
Okay, I'll say.
Discussion?
Just to clarify the motion, this is Durant, Councilmember Durant's motion with the model B addition that we report back on the HRC contract in January.
To HOPEs and Solutions.
HOPEs and Solutions. And then to the full city council thereafter, including a discussion of an analysis of whether the, how best to fund legal services.
Correct.
And the cost, yeah, the whole. Thank you.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll go to a vote. Vote, please.
You can now enter your vote. Waiting on one vote. All votes have been entered. Five ayes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Public Communications, do you have any cards? Mr. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have seven public comments.
Let's get started, please.
Our first speaker is Evelyn Arnold, followed by Nirvana K. Evelyn Arnold. We'll move on to Nirvana K. Okay. It's Terrence Foley in the room. Okay, we have Terrence Foley, followed by Jorge De Leon.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a long night. It's gonna be real short. I'm Terry Foley speaking on behalf of the Pierpont Bay Community Council and wanting to thank Mayor Joe Short and City Manager, City Attorney, members of the city council, and especially Monica de La Hoya for the progress on the short-term vacation rental ordinance. I'm understanding that that could be in front of the planning commission in October. And I know it took a lot of work. It's been a long time. So thank you very much for your effort, especially. Good night.
Our next speaker is Jorge De Leon, followed by Glenn O'Leary. Good evening again. My name is Jorge. I'm in District 205. I'm giving advice. Just expressing something. I've actually been coming to the city council for as long as I remember. Just went back into the history and folk within. There's been a lot of public discourse and such. Very, very, very disappointed with the fact that this is part of the public discourse, our participation as citizens of this town, of this city, and our ability to be able to address, you know, bring written letters and so forth. And for us to get negative feedback or even be chastised, you know, it's very intimidating to come and speak to you guys. So I'm very disappointed as a whole that our ability to come to you and speak to you on issues that affect the community. 10 years ago, we were talking about the water issues. We spoke about how conserving water was actually ended up raising our rates because we were saving so much water that they couldn't keep up with the save, you know, how much water we were saving couldn't keep up. So the water rates went up. We spoke about it. We've been talking about housing issues. We've been talking about so many things, but I'm just so disappointed that some of my fellow volunteers that, you know, speak on certain issues that have to do with housing for all and get the negative response in writing, negative response to that kind of stuff, almost to quiet us, is very, very disappointing. So I want to share with you guys, I do not like how things are going with the city council when it comes to our ability to speak to the narrative, speak to everybody. It's not one side over another. Give us the ability to speak freely about the subject matters without giving a negative response to our community. Our next speaker is Glenn O'Leary, followed by Paddy.
Just some quick housekeeping bill. You must be quite annoying. You said we're going to have two council members replaced. There could be three. Just a thought. City Manager. Great job by Derek Keely and Joe had filled in for a little bit. So appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you. All right. A council member said something that kind of caught my ear. Building trust, then democracy was set. And then a few minutes later, we were going to talk about the amount of public speakers that were going to talk on the item we just talked about. And then we limit their time to two minutes. Is that the building trust they are talking about? Is that the democracy you're talking about? The speaker that was just before me, essence of the same thing. I'm not going to get that many opportunities to talk about the two ballot measures, so I'm going to do it every opportunity that I get. So ballot member P is in pop. The gender neutral language, completely understand. The other changes to the charter, I completely understand. Hiding compensation for council members, not building trust, guys. It's in the very bottom of that test. That's not building trust. And then tying that to the standards of general law cities. That's going to be, as I understand it, kind of done through perpetuity because you've said as the population increases, so will council compensation. As a voter, I want to vote for any raises compensation that council gets. That's my right. The other one, measure Q, or I'm sorry, ballot measure Q. Taking the voters' rights away during the absence or vacancy. Again, I would rather vote for somebody. And what I did today, just by accident, is I looked at Santa Barbara's city charter, section 503 under vacancies. I hope the two ballot measures that you've provided the citizens, I hope they both fail, but not because I don't think some changes are needed. I don't like the language that you used. I think language closer to Santa Barbara is more appropriate. And I wish that you would have mimicked that a little bit more. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patty Overly, followed by Spencer Noren.
I'm not going to speak about the ballot measures. I'm really disappointed in what happened tonight for the tenants' protection. There were two things. Well, first of all, over the last several years that I've been attending, we have had multiple times where those same tenants on the West Side have come before this council begging for help. And you have all said, oh, we got to do something. We got to do something. You know, it's like watching a ping pong thing with you guys sometimes. Then you have an opportunity to give some legal money and you fight over that. And that's for, Doug, you said in your comments, why do we make laws we can enforce? It was told to you not tonight. Why? Why do we even ask that? It was told to you multiple times. And then you have the opportunity, the mayor tried to start it and then Mike had, he went with Jim's plan, but added that caveat so that these tenants.
I just want to remind you, you're speaking on an item that was on the agenda tonight. This period is for items that.
Okay, so I'll try to leave it to a general, the behavior of the council is where I'm going with this. You have the opportunity to do something. You talk a good line when you can, and then when you can't, you don't. So it's extremely disappointing. Want to also talk to code enforcement because that came up. Great point. We're not called code enforcement. I'm not shy. I have no problem when I say something. They ask name, rank, and serial number. Someone who's in a very vulnerable position isn't going to be able to do that. They can't give their name. So they're not going to cull things in. This is kind of common sense. Most of us are very privileged in our lives, you know. I grew up in that very unprivileged situation. I'm at a different time in my life. And I've done things to get where I'm at. I kind of wrote that in email to you guys today. But I grew up in that situation. And you know, we have one council member sitting here that I'm aware of that really understands that life today. And that's Councilmember Campos. And that's why she always speaks up for her constituents, Mr. Durant. And I watched that one video where you kind of were lecturing her on that zero on maybe how business is brought. She always stands up for her constituents, the most vulnerable people. So that should be no surprise to anybody. So that should be no surprise to anybody. But very disappointed for those tenants who are really suffering. You can do something now. And, and this has gone on too long, so enjoy your night.
Our next speaker is Spencer Noren, followed by Nirvana K.
Thank you, Eric. VP Mayor, Council, VP, translation, appreciate the back. Mayor, did you miss me? Been a long time. One comment tonight, just for you, sir. Uh, I wanted to get into, um, this deep discussion today, but more importantly, I go into the fluidity of our community being involved and the relationship we continue to have with our school district. It's a very, very powerful and important. And to the point where there was a school board meeting tonight, the first one in a couple of weeks. And when we moved our schedule from Monday to Tuesday, I think the biggest discrepancy that wasn't caught, even though I mentioned a public comment, it's the same night as our school board meetings. This is super valuable. You know, tonight, there was over 50 residents speaking on behalf of the Washington School property. A teacher named sort of Doug Kidwell went around locking them doors, passing out letters, and all were complete favor of keeping it historic and keeping the open space of what I saw and heard in tests which I had at school board. And I wish to the council, I mean, it could have been that. I think it would have been very powerful and understanding to see Mayor, this is currently your district, where the Washington School property is. And just, really just a fluid motion between the schools and, right? Because how can you be of those? I think the old making public comment, I thought maybe Christie, we're might pop in tonight. But it was really, really important for us to be able to see tonight on the agenda. I saw something else that was it, uh, something about the schools. It wasn't resource officers. You know, I'm gonna I'm gonna use my time to show the importance of our school relationship because it comes out so much. Reimbursement between Ventura High School District and the city of Ventura High School crossing the arch with this school here in 2025. And the city does another difference. I said the same comment, very similar at the school district. 95% of residents don't know the difference between the county land, the city land, the school district land. Why are the fences locked and why are they open? What's happening? And even furthermore, there's meetings happening all the time. I just found out tonight, there's a 711 committee meeting. We all know what that committee is. It was created by the school district to talk about selling of surplus land. And in that land is, was eventually 20 properties, it went down to seven. And now it's about five main properties looking to sell. Avenue School being one of them, the Stanley property, Washington School property, and also two, uh, landlocked agricultural properties. I would love for a council member to please be at the subcommittee of 711 on Thursday, I believe at 3:00 PM. Be very valuable. Something I wanted to bring up. Also, along those notes, uh, it came up where solar is going across all of our school districts. And would you believe Councilmember Duran that they thought about putting solar panels above the yard in the quad at Ventura High School? Interesting topic. Maybe one of our council members who went to Ventura High School or Buena would like to weigh in on that type of stuff. Because there's no current board members that went to Ventura High or even graduated from the district. A few notes of the importance of relationship with the school district and the city.
Our next speaker is Nirvana K.
You should always have a cone. Okay, as a construction worker, I've noticed some things that need to be reconstructed in this town. And, um, and there are some organizations in this town that absolutely definitely need to be demoed. And, um, I'd like to talk about the reconstruction of this town. Because we got some, got some missing, uh, wheelchair ramps that, that have disappeared. And, and I heard some things. I don't know if it's true or not, but I heard some people didn't like them because they didn't like it, they said they looked ugly or something. But beauty, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. To some people, wheelchair ramp might look ugly. But somebody that's in a wheelchair, a wheelchair ramp is a thing of beauty. And to somebody that's disabled and, and has a problem, you know, getting back and forth to work out here as a musician, have to push things in carts, a wheelchair ramp is a thing of beauty. And I heard somebody took all those wheelchair ramps, took chainsaws and butchered them up. I don't think that's too nice. I don't think that's too nice. So, so I think we should reconstruct these, uh, wheelchair ramps and anchor them into the concrete. That's what we ought to do, and so. And I forgot to say, peace and love to everyone and everything, everywhere. All we are saying is give love a chance. All we are saying is give love a chance. Thank you for your time. Thank you, my love, you all.
Mayor, please leave a comment.